Okay, we're live.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us. We apologize for being a couple of minutes delayed. We were having some technical difficulties. We're gonna start with Mr. Hyatt leading us in the pledge and then I'm gonna lead us in a prayer.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear God, I just come to you tonight on behalf of every person within our system, our staff and our faculty, our teachers, our teachers assistants, our bus drivers, our janitors, our cafeteria workers, our administrative staff, every person within our system that contacts and comes in contact with a child who has the amazing potential to change a child's life. Lord, I pray for each of them. I pray for our central office staff. And I pray for our families and our students and our parents. We don't have to say this out loud because it's just the elephant in the room, that we are in such uncertain, uncharted waters. I think that, again, it goes without saying that you know the heart of every person within our system, that we truly want what's best for our students and our families and our faculty and our staff. But it's hard to see, God, what that is. So I just ask that you will settle on us, give us wisdom and guidance, and give us a sense of peace as to where we're headed and allow each of us to know that we can rest in you. Amen.
Is your computer unmuted? Is that computer unmuted?
This computer is unmuted, yes.
Okay, because Kim is saying, and please forgive me for this, everyone, Kim is saying that she can see you but she cannot hear.
Sir.
Because I think I'm not talking and we're pretty good distance away from the rest of the board members.
So maybe, maybe if you'll, maybe let's put that computer back over here. Tonight Lambert's not able to be with us and neither is Kim. Kim, can you hear now? Can you hear now Lambert?
I can hear better.
Okay. Brandon, would you please continue to work with Kim and you can use this phone to do that if you would like to? And to see if we can get her to come up. We've never had this level of technical difficulty before. And I don't know if it's because we're in a different room or because they're in different places. Kim is out of town tonight, Lambert's in Cherokee. So we're gonna, we're gonna begin, I think, with a request, with a request to, to change the agenda just a little bit. I want to add something and I'll share this with you. Can she hear now?
She was gonna try to call me and I don't, she was gonna try to call me to get me made or through yourself.
Okay, either way is fine. Everything is the same on here as I sent to you yesterday and Melly had approved. But I had forgotten to think about the fact that we have some things that are going on in the school system that are good to look at. And I think that it would be wise for us tonight, before we dig into the real difficult stuff, to look at something that's positive. And so we have the Jump Start program that's going on at East and West. We have about 50 students that are, that are involved. They're riding buses, they're doing everything that would be happening in a normal school day if we were in the building, kind of on a reduced scale. And that's one of the reasons that I was really looking forward to Jump Start, to see if we could get the procedures down and get everything working. And so far, I believe it's working pretty well. But I would like Amanda Sutton, who is serving as the lead administrator for Jump Start, to, to talk to us. And, and Joe has put together a video of some of the things that happened today, just for you to look at. And then I've got some teachers here who are working in Jump Start and they're gonna, I have not prompted them to say anything. I want them to speak the truth. And I want you to have an opportunity to speak to some of our staff who have actually seen these pieces in place and hear what they're thinking. Because I think that's a very important piece right now, okay? So Amanda, please.
So like Mr. Self said, we have around 50 kids who are attending both East and West. It is rising third and fourth graders and it's a reading camp. So we're teaching reading all day long, but they are making it very fun for the kids. We were a little apprehensive, worried about the masks. We thought it would be a big issue with the kids. They wouldn't wear them. Parents would fuss about them. So far, the only issue we have had is one parent said, "My child has asthma." Right now, we, I know that the guidelines have kind of changed and they update, it seems like, every second, but we have been able to safely socially distance each of the kids. And you will hear in the video, I'm sure, that Mr. Dunford says, "Are you in your safe spot? If you're in your safe spot, you may remove your mask." And that's, they have the chairs and the desks set six feet apart, so they're never in contact with each other. You'll see how they line up, how they, you'll see kids counting squares because they have 12-inch tiles in the elementary schools. And so each one of those is a foot. So one of the kids, every single time, he counts six squares before he'll get his spot in line. The kids have been so excited. The very first day in the lobby, one of the secretaries was just shouting and cheering them on coming in. We had a balcony full of assistants and cafeteria staff and it was like a parade. The kids were so excited to be there. And the adults were so excited to have kids in the building. And they've been there three days now and they are just as excited to come back tomorrow as they were on the first day. Do you have any questions?
Encouraging.
We're very excited by it. One of the comments that, that I heard by the adults, oh, sorry.
I need to speak into that microphone, sorry.
One of the, the, the comments that I keep hearing over and over with, from the adults is, "I feel safe. This has eased a lot of our concerns" because we are taking all the necessary precautions. And Cassie even said, "I wish everyone could come in and see this because they are safe." We had a kid who said, "I'm scared of getting Corona." And the teacher talked about everything that we're doing and she's like, "Okay," and she went another day. So that was on the first day, so.
Just curious about the one with asthma. How did you handle that? I mean, how?
Um, we told them, the child actually wanted to wear them. And it was, it was no big deal. They rarely wore them, just because we've social distanced them when they're in the hallway. At the, the rule is when you're out of your seat, you put your mask on, just because you may get close to someone else. So anytime they're out of their seat, they have a mask on. So that includes if they're in the hallway, if they're in the bathroom. When we go outside, they do not wear masks because it's, feels like 95 degrees. The heat index is sometimes 100-plus. But she actually wanted to wear it. And so when mom said that, she was like, "I like it." We let them decorate on. Mr. Self said they could decorate on. We do have a couple of issues. I said, "We're gonna have to have some extras on hand." And one day alone, we had a nosebleed, a really nasty sneeze, and one of the ear strings broke on one of them. So we're gonna have to have, even though, you know, the state is gonna provide the five cloth ones for them, none of the kids have forgotten their masks. We've just had little incidents where we need to have a few extra handy, so.
So they, they come onto campus with their mask on their person in some form or fashion?
If they're in the car, they notice they in the car roll the window down, they get their temperature checked, and the teachers will ask them the three questions with the parents there. The first day, we had a kid that hopped out and we asked the three questions and the whole time he went, he didn't say a word, he just shrugged his shoulders. On buses, they get off one by one. They're actually in seats, so when they get on the bus, they know exactly where they're supposed to sit. And they are assigned a seat based on their stop. So they're never in contact with the people in the back of the bus, having to walk through everyone. So first stop sits here, second stop sits here. When they get off the bus, they get off one at a time and the teachers line them up on the concrete lines, which is actually more like seven feet instead of just six feet apart. And one teacher will check the temperature, the other will document it and ask the questions.
About how long does that take?
Uh, it really doesn't take that long at all, does it?
Less than a minute.
Per child, yeah, yeah.
Oh, for the whole, if, we have eight, that's the most that we have on a bus right now. And that takes less than two minutes for all eight of them. I mean, that's getting them off the bus, lining them up, checking their temperature and asking the questions.
Perfect. That's good.
Other questions?
I, I mean, as far as Mark, how, how are the parents feeling when they drop the kids off and picking up? Is there a sense that they feel secure in what's happening and how it's happening?
They absolutely, they feel secure. I think they're as excited as we are that they're, they're back at school. They, one parent asked if they could still pack their lunch. I think there's some rumors going around that some neighboring districts are not allowing packed lunches. And as far as I, I knew that was, that was okay, that we're still packing lunches. Have you guys heard any concerns?
No.
No.
The first day, they seemed a little.
Sorry.
Um, I do the buses, so I don't see any parents. Lydia takes their temperature and I write it down. The kids, it was my kid the first day that said she was nervous about catching COVID. And I told her, you know, "We've got this extra strength hand sanitizer, we're wearing our masks, our desks are six feet apart." There are actually more now because I think Amanda read today that it's supposed to be six feet or more. So we made them seven feet apart now. And we have that QT-3 spray. We spray their desk and their chairs at the end of every day. And they see us spray the playground off when we get done playing. So they see that we've done all these things. And I actually had a, a little girl come today and she said, "I went home and I told my mom that you sprayed, you sprayed the playground and we have our masks on." And I told my kids, "If you want to wear your mask in your chair, that's totally fine if you're," because I had one that said, "My mom wants me to wear it anytime that I'm not eating." I said, "That's totally fine. If your mom wants you to wear it all the time, you can." And she came back and said, "My mom said that since we're doing all that stuff, as long as I'm at my desk, I can take my mask off." And I think Jason had mentioned that the first day, parents were kind of.
Yeah, the first car, first few cars that pulled up, nobody was like sure what's going on because here I have, I've got the thermometer right here, ready to fire. And we talked, talked to the parents, like, "This is what we're gonna do. We're gonna do this every day." Kids, of course, they didn't know what to say. They didn't know if they had chills or sore throat or anything like that, but we got through that. And the next, and the next day was smoother. And, and even some parents have been responding that they've had a good time. The kids were having a great time. And I was wondering, because we've been pushing them pretty hard. I mean, they've been staring at a screen since March, right? And now they have no screens. And we're deep into reading and we're pushing them pretty hard. And I was like, "Man, I don't know if this is fun." But I think the fun part, and it was for me too, is the socialization with other children. They needed that as much, and I needed that too. And I think that's one thing we can't leave out. When we first sat in this room and we were talking about the safety protocols that we were gonna be going through, compared to how we used to walk into a classroom, it's immense. But now, about lunchtime, the first day, I was like, "This isn't scary." This ain't scary. This is doable, you know? And of course, kids forget to put their mask on when they get on, but they cue each other now. We've turned it more of into a game instead of, you know, you're gonna get punished if you don't put that mask on. And now they are supporting each other. And you've probably seen the video, they're counting the squares to make sure they're far. There's always a lying Nazi that's making sure that everybody is certain about. But anyway, it's been a real positive experience.
And I think it's important, from a lot of parents I've talked to, it's important that they can take their mask off at their desk. It's important that we can still do stations. We've been doing stations with their mask on. You know, everybody can only use their pencil, they can only use their crayons. And actually, we have, everybody has a Ziploc bag and we're reading a Friendle, the book, and everybody has their own book. They put it in their bag. So every day, all their stuff is in their bag. They can only use their stuff. But they can still sit at a station with their friends and talk. And that was really important to me because it's not fun to sit there and not talk to anybody all day. So, you know, we're, we have our workbook and you can go sit with your friends, but you can't touch anybody else's work. And you might see on the video, I had a kid pick up another kid's workbook and I was like, "Oh, hand sanitizer," you know? And so I think now even, the first day, Mr. Self asked that we talked about how you take care of your mask and how you wear your mask and why it's important. And we did. And you know that now they're like, "Oh, Amanda, you forgot your mask. You need to put it on before you get up." And we've, it's gonna take training. I don't think the kids mind, but they have to learn, "Before I stand up, I gotta put my mask on." And like even me, I was thinking, "If I have my mask on, I can walk to their desk even if they don't." And we, no, you have to both wear your masks. So now it's, remember, oh, she's, she's passing the lunches out, put your mask on. And they're really good at reminding each other. And we talked about washing your mask every night. If you don't wash it, you need to wear a different one. It's, you have to remind each other politely. And they, I, I could not believe how good they were, which these are third and fourth graders. But they were so good about wearing their mask. And it did make it more fun. They could decorate them. One girl drew all over hers and went home and washed it. The next day, it was tie dye. And she thought that was the best thing ever. So I, I was really surprised at how well the masks went and how good they're doing.
Mark, could you have the people talking identify themselves?
This is Cassie McMahon.
I'm Jason Dunford.
Was that Edma talking before? I didn't, I didn't know who that was.
It's, it's Jason Dunford.
Oh, Jason Dunford, I should know.
We've met before.
Okay, I just didn't, I, I, just I can't see you, I don't know where you are.
Um, I think most of our things, our concerns have, we've found a solution. The things, the buses and the parent pickup, I don't feel like are taking a long time. The bathroom takes a long time. You can only have one kid in there at a time. And while they're waiting, we have them spaced out six squares, so that takes up the whole hallway, you know? So we're thinking maybe it's better to have two go at a time and the rest stay on their desk. Stuff like that is gonna change when we have seven or 10. I have five kids right now. So stuff like that's gonna change a little bit. We're using the sinks in our classrooms to wash our hands and Mr. Clapsettle got little soaps for all of them so we can wash our hands and stuff like that. We've got plastic cups so they can get water from the sink, throw them away. Stuff like that, we're just having to figure out as we go, but nothing super concerning that we haven't been able to find a solution.
Do you feel good? And you think it's representative what's, what it's gonna be like in the fall when the, when the whole school, as far as the folks who are coming back? Do you feel that it's representative of how it will go?
Uh, as far as the safety protocols and how you clean up a classroom before and afterwards, I think that's gonna be the same for every room. And it doesn't take a long time, especially with the sprayers we have. Some of you, like Cassie was saying, it's, it's the handling of materials that we're not used to. We're like, you know, if everybody needs crayons, here's a crayon bucket. And now it can't be a crayon bucket anymore. It's, and here, you know, pencils, you've got to have your own pencil.
Can't share.
Can't share those anymore. And you know, with collaboration, we've all, we've been pushing these kids for years to learn how to do that, you know? And, uh, so there's just logistics. That's basically what it is. And it's like she said, it's nothing we haven't found a solution for. And I'm sure we'll find better solutions, especially as it comes along on a larger scale.
I will be honest with you. I am a little concerned about the buses, just because they all come at one time. And that's a lot of kids at once. And I know it's gonna be 50% at most, but I do wonder how long that's gonna take asking the questions and checking the temperature before they go in the building when there's that many.
And you're probably gonna have to hold buses to let them be spaced out the way they're supposed to be.
We have found out that flexibility with schedules, don't get upset, just be patient when you are not exactly receiving your lunch at 12 o'clock. We have to be very patient with that.
Mark, are any of the other surrounding counties doing Jump Start or is it just that?
Every, Lambert, every county is doing their, their own process with that. I can speak specifically to the fact that Buncombe County has held their Jump Start and it has operated very much like ours. I know that Clay County has already held theirs and it may still be going on. Past that, I can't speak specifically because I haven't spoken with those principals about that. And I don't know exactly what their responses would be to that.
Well, I'm just wondering, you know, if either school systems are doing it and work in some kind of success rate that we are.
I know that, um, there have been several people who visited Buncombe County's Jump Start last week, including Mark Johnson, the superintendent. And he spoke at a state digital conference meeting with, with the superintendent yesterday and said he was very pleased with what he saw. Of course, Mark Johnson is a politician also.
So everybody that we know are bringing their kids in. You're not doing it remotely?
Everyone that I know specifically is bringing their students in. That doesn't mean that every county is doing it that way. I can't say that definitively.
Yeah, I understand that, but, but there are other counties that are bringing their, their children in and so that's, that's, that's a no.
If you want, if you want to see Buncombe County's representation of that, they provided a five-minute video before they started of what it was going to look like for the entrance procedures and how they want to carry it off in the buildings. And I wish that I had been as smart as them and had done that ahead of time because it's, it's pretty exceptional. But there are several who have done it this way, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And we did offer parents, if they did not want to do face-to-face, they had the opportunity to do remote or packets. We had one person who chose to do remote and two people who chose to do packets.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for what you're doing.
Lambert, did you have something else?
Yeah, I'm, I'm. Really positive that we gave parents the option, you know, to do remotely or with the packets. I think that's, that's really good thing. Of course, you know, in Scranton County, I would expect that.
Well, and that's, that's one of the hallmarks of everything that we're doing, regardless of how we, we turn tonight. The goal's gonna be to meet every student in every way that we can. And we have that total commitment from every person in our school system, which makes it a great place.
Yeah.
Any other questions for these folks? I'd love for you to see the video. It'll take five minutes, if that's okay. Because again, it's, it's gonna, it'll just make you feel good.
So when our kids are dropped off for Jump Start camp, they come in the gym. We have a teacher in here watching them. They all have their own dots, spaces that they sit on. It's the same every single day. They are at least six feet apart. When the teachers are finished with parent drop-off and buses, they come and we will call Ms. Self's class. They stand up, maintaining that six feet distance, and then she escorts them to their room. And then the remaining teachers will come in and do the same.
Everybody in their safe zone?
Yes.
What is it we gotta remember when we get up?
Refer to the passage, if needed. All right, so have we read a passage yet?
No.
All right, so does anyone see? Does anybody see anything else?
Uh, just maybe about Miss St. Mary's.
Okay, but do you see any of Miss St. Mary's? Also, there's some of the fibers from the paper. The fibers are safe.
Grab, grab tight.
Grab tight.
Grab tight.
Need to use your own marker.
Get your markers, get your dry erase and then you can do it.
It can just become like, oh, you can, if you can get, it's all delicate. He wrote on the floor, okay, then. The main, the central hunters through the turtle.
Come on, Gracie. I wanna color your, you ready, yeah? You pull ahead, you ready, yeah? All right, arms out. You got it. Go ahead. Oh, Jordan, distance. Good job, buddy. You can put those arms down if you want. You can keep your distance. Good job, friend. That's great. Good job. Go all the way down. Count six squares. One, two, three, four, five, six. Are there six in between even and I under this? Run me space. Spaghetti, Phoebe. I was so excited! Hey, you're safe. Try some of those. I better put them wrong, give me space. Awesome! Thank you so much. We have so much lunch. We're gonna do more. Oh, my gosh, we're so excited. Spaghetti, spaghetti, spaghetti! We need to add two more, Fred. Oh, yes. Thank you, guys, sweetie. Have you washed your hands yet? Can you wait for me until you wash your hands? When they eat? So you can take your mask off to eat. Of course, you can't eat through your mask.
I hope it made you feel good. That was the intent.
Absolutely.
And I need for everybody to understand that nothing that was said, nothing that Joe filmed was prompted or staged. I said, "Joe, I want you at the schools at 11:00 and I, and I just want you to video what you see." And he did. And one of the things that was interesting is Joe videoed some things that I looked at and I said, "No, we can't do it that way. We can't do it that way." So it gave us an opportunity to also make some corrections. But what you saw was live and real, okay? All right? Any questions? Thoughts?
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Y'all have a good evening. Go rest. You've got another day tomorrow. Now, I will tell you that there was a point where the students sat down and immediately took off their masks. And a new guidance has come out this week. I didn't get a copy of the new guidance until this morning. At 11 o'clock. We've, we've been hearing about it. The recommendation now is that all staff and all students wear masks all the time with breaks. Before, it was, Before, it was if you are within safe social distance. That piece is still in there. But it seems that the Department of Health and Human Services is amping that up a little bit at this point while they're relaxing some other pieces. And Allison's gonna talk about that in a few minutes. And one of the great, is the next thing on the agenda? Ride or die?
Ride or die, Mark?
Yes.
Mark has one question.
Yes.
The only concern that I have about a Jump Start is, is it possible for the bus drivers to check the temperature before they get on the bus? Or if they get on the bus and if they have a fever, then they go back home?
That is, first, it's difficult for the bus driver to maintain safety and do that. And that's been a discussion point across the state and even today in a conference call that I had with all the regional superintendents. One of our primary concerns, Lambert, is if they have a temperature and if we send them home, are we sure that someone will be there to take care of them?
Yeah, yeah, of course, I understand that. But, you know, I just wondered if anyone wasted from that may be exposing our stewardess to the virus. Is that maybe not be possible?
Well, you know, Lambert, I think that all things are possible if we're willing to put the amount of effort into it that it will take. There is another-
Well, we probably will call somebody else to be help of those with the drop.
That's, that's right.
I mean, most of them would pass that around.
Right now, we have three buses. So we could accomplish that right now. But when we run that out into the school year, we're gonna be running 20 buses. And right now, we may be even looking at 22 buses. And I don't know that we have the staff to be able to do that and make sure that we're screening students when they get in the building the way it needs to happen.
No, we could do that now.
We can do that now.
I would, I would feel much better if we did, but I don't feel that right now. Everybody else feels bad.
I can make that happen. I think that's not a problem, really. Then again, I need everybody also to think about the fact that when we, if we get to a school year and eventually, regardless of the decision that happens tonight, we will be in Plan B probably at some time, okay? And if we dedicate ourselves to having someone on the bus, we're going to have to also dedicate the finances that are gonna go into that. And Tommy has run the numbers on that. And if we're willing to dedicate this amount of money, then we can make it happen. That's why I started with the statement that I did. So Tommy, when we ran the numbers, what's it gonna cost us?
Around $155,000.
It'll cost us about $155,000 to put another person on the bus in the morning. We wouldn't have to have him in the afternoon. Correct? And for how long would that-
How long would that, how long would that cover? The whole year?
Is it 155 for the whole year? Yes, for the whole year.
Okay, and hopefully, we won't have to do it for the whole year. I believe that we should, we should really invest in doing that.
We will, we'll do our best to make that happen. It may mean that we're going to have to hire additional staff somehow to make sure that we can have everybody in place to screen, to monitor the children. So we have to remember that when you're in Plan B, the kids have to go straight to the classroom. So we can't congregate them.
Maybe if we do, if we do that with Jump Start, then they can check back and, you know, look at it again if we need to do it when school starts.
We can, we can do that and use it as a test case, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I think, you know, if we've only got three buses going, we kind of want to hire three people to check kids before they get on the bus.
We can make that happen. And then the next question for us is gonna be, and if a student has a temperature, do we send them home? Or do we isolate them and bring them onto school and then call them?
I guess it all depends on whether the parents are there. If the parents are outside, we don't have to break phones and get them back.
Okay, we'll have to work through that. Brandon? Hang on just a minute. Brandon, what were you gonna say? Were you gonna say something? Come on. While Brandon's looking, Travis, what were you saying?
I was just saying that, you know, you can also look at these bus stops. We've got a bus sitting in one place. How long is this gonna take to screen and ask the questions that you're supposed to? I mean, there is a safety concern there.
I didn't think about that point. Travis said there's another issue to consider on this, and that is if a bus is at a bus stop and they're screening students as they get on, how long is that gonna take and how long is the bus gonna sit there?
Well, I guess it depends on how many kids we have in the bus. So I don't know. If I just take care of it, we can, if we have a stewardess that's positive, if we can catch it before they get on the bus, then we'll have it.
So we could, we can put a test case in during Jump Start because the bus numbers are limited.
Yeah, that's what I like to do.
And then we'll see how that's going to play out with the others. Brandon, you have information in your hand.
So if a student screams positive? So by guidance, if a student screams positive, they're not allowed to board. So we would have to send all students back. And then some may not have parents still at home. And there is the option to do the attestation.
Now, Brandon, since you've mentioned the attestation, this is something that we're going to have to do at any rate if, to offer parents another option for students that are riding the bus. Explain what an attestation is, please.
So the state provided an attestation document where parents sign, "I will screen my parent, my student before I send them to the bus." And it's just that parent's promise to screen before they send them down. And that's something we'd already, we were going to do when we returned to school, regular school, is to have those parents of all bus riders sign that attestation, that I promise that if my student's at the bus stop, we screen them before they left the house.
How long is it good for?
It's good for the whole year. I sent a, I sent a message to Chris Campbell asking what length of time that attestation would last because there's been some real concern, did they do one every day, whatever? And Chris said it's good for the whole year.
So did they, is that one of the requirements that we ask parents to do for Jump Start?
No, because we were uncertain about the attestation piece. And so we decided to bring them onto school and screen them when they get there because they're pretty far separated on the buses when they come in now. But we can, we can absolutely get some, some people to ride the buses. I'll do my best to have that happen in the morning.
Well, if we could get, if we could get parents to check it before that happens, you know, I, you know how I feel about kids being left at home and left over there.
Yeah.
So, you know, maybe the parents test them before they send them. Then if they're, if they have a fever, then they won't send them.
And I think, actually think that's probably the best solution for this. And then we, we have to trust people to do what's right. And that's gonna be one of the big pieces in all of this, is trusting people to do what's right.
That's what we have to do with the whole, with this whole situation is trust people. So, you know, if they can, if parents will say, will promise that they'll test them at home before they get on the bus, then I could be okay with that.
Okay. So then what we'll do, Brandon, is tomorrow, first thing when you're not working tomorrow, before you leave tonight, if you would please get me a copy of the attestations. And then I will take them to the school personally in the morning on my day off, just so you know. And make sure that they take them home.
They'll be cash, they'll be-
Yeah, whatever.
Amanda's here tonight. She could take them tonight for you.
So Brandon just saved me. Because he's gonna give them to his wife and let, get her to take them. She's working at the camp.
I'm curious about that.
Station. Let Kim go ahead.
Kim, yes, go ahead, please.
Sorry, my question is, you know, someone, a parent says an attestation about what they're, if they're taking the temperature of a child to ensure there's no fever and then answer the questions related to the other symptoms being asked.
Yes, that's exactly what is on the attestation. Brandon is gonna go to his office and he's going to get, he's gonna get some copies of it. And we're gonna do our best to get that to you, Tommy.
So what if, so what if we have a family that doesn't have a thermometer? And I know that, you know, it's always what ifs, and I get it, and this is one of the times that there's so many what ifs. But, I mean, are we able to help provide for that? Or is that something that we just, I know we can't answer every need.
Well, if they have a thermometer, they can get rid to, to staff on the bus.
We-
You know, we can send each kid home with one of the thermometers so that the parents can check them before they come back the next day.
Is, Tommy, is there a requirement for the type of thermometer to be used away from the school?
No.
It doesn't have to be touchless if it's at the house?
No, if it's at the house and it's theirs and they're signing the attestation that says that this is, this is, the child was clear whenever they left the house to the best of my knowledge. That's what the attestation is saying. They could use whatever they wanted to inside their own home. And I don't think anybody would have any growl about that at all.
So what we need to do then, Kim, and again, I'm in support of without any problem, is to research how much thermometers would cost and to get the most durable, cost-effective thermometer and send them to the house so that the parents will have that access. And we can do that for every single child in the school system. Not a problem.
Yeah. And that would be cheaper than paying for a staff member to ride the bus.
Absolutely.
Just the last name.
I think that's an option, we should, we can go with that.
Okay. And Tommy has brought, no, Tommy, I'm sorry, Brandon. Brandon has brought a copy of the attestation. Kim, do you know what the three questions are?
I know, now.
Mellie, would you, would you read those questions? I'm gonna move the computer so you can hear better.
So, excuse me. Question number one is, has your child had close contact within six feet for at least 15 minutes in the last 14 days? Was someone diagnosed with COVID? Or has any health department or healthcare provider been in contact with you and advised you to quarantine? If they check yes, then the child should not be at school. If they check no, then the child can be at school if the child is not experiencing symptoms. And then the second question, are the symptoms, does your child have any of these symptoms? Fever, chills, shortness of breath, or difficulty breathing? New cough, new loss of taste or smell? And then, since they were last at school, has your child been diagnosed with COVID-19? And that's a yes or no. And then the directions as to what to do, depending on how you answer that question.
How often do they have to answer that?
This one looks like a daily one. This is a daily attestation that I'm looking at.
I mean, when we start the school year.
Ask that question again, Jerry.
When we start the school year, is that gonna be done daily?
Yes. Well, the form would go home with the parent to sign and bring back. But Chris Campbell says we only need one signed copy of this to come back with the student to have on record. And that is the promise of the parent to do that as long as we are in the state of emergency.
So when you're looking at just the example? We would have to modify it to read our, read our requirements, parents. You're committing to doing this every day-
Right.
For this period.
For this period.
Yep.
And I think it would be beneficial to have wording in there that says, you know, you all are much better at wording things than I am, should your child present to school? And they have any of these symptoms, we're calling you. I mean, that your child will not be allowed to remain at school. I think that's important.
Yeah, and that's in some other documentation we have about the school procedures.
But I think that might be, it does, I don't think it would hurt to word it again on the attestation.
I agree.
Just to put some weight to this, to say, if you are signing this and saying that this is what you're going to do, then please understand that when your child gets to school, if the situation's not what it should be, you know, we're immediately calling you.
And we should continue to test them as they get off the bus.
Exactly, yes, exactly.
Lambert-
We have parents who are gonna test if they're not. And then we want to continue to check as they get off the bus.
That's state guidance.
Yeah, but we can deal with it.
That is state guidance. There's allowance for us to use the attestation rather than screen when they get on the bus. But when the student, when anyone walks into the building, student, staff, visitor, they have to be screened for temperature and they have to have, they have to answer these questions. Every person.
Yeah, okay.
Every day.
That would satisfy me with that.
Perfect, good.
Other thoughts and questions?
One, just a question, just for my information. What's the average number on the bus for this program this summer?
Oh, it's low, Jerry.
About two or three, at the most.
Yeah, two or three, five.
Five at the most.
We have 50 students and most of them are bringing, are being driven to school.
And then the fall, what's the average looking like, Toby?
Toby?
It's still way too early to tell, but it's-
Can't be more than nine, max could be.
I don't know about that.
No, it'd be more than nine.
If there's one per seat?
Has to be one per seat.
It can be, it can be. What's the, what's the, what's the maximum?
Eighteen.
What's the maximum, the minimum bus number of seats?
Eighteen is what we've got. The smallest one, 22 is the largest.
And there's a guidance that we have, Jerry, that students from the same household can sit together.
But otherwise?
But that's only two per seat.
Yeah, that's only two per seat.
So if you've got three family members, then they're gonna take up two seats.
Yes.
I'm comfortable with that and I'm comfortable with it. On opposite end, seated, I'm not comfortable if you've got one in this seat and one right behind it. They're not six feet there, are they?
The state guidance allows us-
Here and here and here per seat.
The state guidance allows us to put one per seat front to back. But what we can do is to diagonal them. And that gives a little more space.
Okay.
And they're supposed to be masked on the bus the whole time. And when they get on the bus, they have to have hand sanitizer. And right now, we're going, we're asking our bus drivers to do that because we feel like they can do that safely. But it's, it's just difficult for them to do all those pieces.
Oh, yeah.
And then the other thing is we're gonna increase the ventilation by lowering the windows one stop at least.
Okay.
What's the longest duration of bus ride in our county? I should know that probably, but I didn't.
That'd be either Big Cove or Needmore or Middle Springs.
I'm asking Tesla, I'm asking Tesla.
It's okay, you're good.
No, we'll, we'll get the information. Because that, Kim, that's one of the concerns that we have also. You know, in some places, they may be able to run two bus routes with the same bus. And maybe even in Bryson City proper here, we could run two bus routes for pickups. But you can't run two routes on Big Cove unless you have two buses.
Right.
We're somewhere around 90 minutes probably for that.
What'd you say?
Somewhere around 90 minutes for that one, I would guess.
Is that 90 minutes one-way or 90-minute round trip?
From first pickup back to school.
From the first pickup back to school, I'm being told that Big Cove is probably a 90-minute route.
Well, that makes sense, maybe double enough on those. And then, I mean, in buses, and then doing two runs on some of the local ones.
Problem we got with the two-run system is we have to go through and spray the buses.
Spray it down, that's-
So that takes time. And plus, the fact is if they're riding on that bus, we have them assigned to a seat, all 22 seats. And that's the only place that bus goes. And we get some sort of contamination and that's the only ones we have to worry about. But if we run two routes, then all of a sudden both busloads become problematic. If that makes sense at all. Because that's a cross-contamination.
Do we have an idea right now, the numbers of want to ride the bus percentage?
Well, that, I was, do we, can we give a estimate based upon the data that we have, which is not 100% clean yet?
It's, it's gonna be somewhere probably around 35% of whatever our numbers are. numbers are. For, we're gauging those at around seventy-ish right now that are parked in the plan B.
They're going to look that, we've got that data.
See, Tessa says Gorge is the lot, one of the law offices, their driver leaves to go to Gorge at 5:30 in the morning. And then Big Cove's next and we already have two buses that run Big Cove.
Wow.
On normal.
If, if we looked at it and we said, all right, it's thirty-five percent of the people that have responded and said that they're going to be in option.
Tommy, you're going to have to come, sorry.
That's okay.
If anybody's listening or.
If we looked at this and we said that it's thirty-five percent of the people that are responding option B, then it would be around thirty-five percent of six hundred and eighty-five is how many have responded. But how many people, we still have in current enrollment in power school, was seventeen hundred and forty-four. That's our current enrollment in power school. So thirty-five percent of, I would say thirty-five percent of, of.
I have to figure that out if you'll give me the numbers again.
What's sixty-five point one eight percent?
Hang on, let me find my calculator on this machine.
I didn't do it for buses, I did it for everything else that you can see.
All right. Go, buddy.
Sixty-five point one eight percent of one thousand seven hundred and forty-four.
Okay, I'm going to go one thousand, give me that last number.
Seven hundred and forty-four.
Now, is that the number of students that are going to be riding the bus on a day?
That is our current enrollment, I'll get there.
Okay. So that's, what percent?
Sixty-five point one eight. This is a projection.
Comes to eleven hundred and thirty-seven.
All right, so that's about, that's about what we think is, is who's going to be on option B. So then you take half of that. And then you multiply that by what was your percentage, by bus riders?
Probably, well, I'd say thirty-five.
About thirty-five percent.
And I think that's probably, that's probably a high number. Looking at a hundred and ninety-eight and we have twenty buses.
Yeah.
If, and that's not really a fair number. You're looking at ten students.
Per bus.
Per bus.
And if you group families together, then that's going to reduce it.
It's still misleading because.
You can't allow make way on buses.
Right.
About one, one community may have twenty that fills the bus up and the other one may have one. It's just what it is.
It'll be different every day, Eric.
Yeah.
Every two days.
Well, what we've got to do is make sure it's not different every day. We need solid.
Take a middle number.
Like Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, Friday, be different students.
Yeah.
Yes.
Tessa thinks we're around eight hundred probably last year.
Eight hundred students?
Yeah, riding the bus.
Okay.
And, and again, you've got to remember if we don't have athletics, which we won't ride away for sure, an extra period for activities after school, then those numbers go up.
Lambert, what were you saying, please?
Um, I, I don't know if I even remember what I was going to say.
I'm in your club.
Oh, yeah, I've been, if some, uh, we've seen that this on base.
Yes.
Uh, we have a way to track who responded, so that the people who have not responded were, and will get in touch with them.
Yes. What our principals have been doing for the past two days and will continue to do, I think that they probably have already accomplished most of this, but they've taken every name that responded, they've, they've applied that to their role, and then every name that had not responded, they are making personal phone calls to.
Okay, great.
And we're gathering that information.
Yeah, okay.
The purpose for that is we want to know if they're Plan A, Plan B or C, and we're also asking them what their transportation expectations will be.
Right, yeah, that, I think that's, that's good, um, yeah.
Buses are going to be tight in some, in some places.
And we're going to have to use, I may be speaking out of turn.
Come on.
But we're going to have to use bus ridership and some of that to plan who is going to be on A days and B days.
Yes.
From these communities so that we can try to get ahead of some of our bus issues. Because, and the other thing is if I have, if it's my family and Cora and Kate are getting ready to get on the bus, I don't want Cora to be a B day and Kate to be a A day.
No, absolutely.
So that way I can put the two of them on that one seat on the bus and we may be able to get our ridership up a little bit by doing that and, and maintain our social distancing and get maximize our, our travel. And that's one thing that we're going to, that we have, we're making every attempt to be systemic in establishing who's going to be on A day and B day just for helping us with that issue.
I asked Mark about that today, I was asked about that. He gave me the answer, you're going to try to do that, that would help. It'll be hard for a parent to have.
Oh, yeah.
That'll be.
Boy or son on Monday, girl on.
Well, if, if we end up on an A-B schedule, if that happens.
Yeah.
And I, and I want to preface everything that we're saying, if that happens, okay? If we're on an A-B schedule, um, I forgot what I was going to say.
It's happening to all of us. It'll come back to you.
We're going to give a memory test.
You know, one, first thing that, that out there, what I've been about is every idea that anything, any issue that we thought about, um, I think that you and your staff have to, already addressed that in some way. So I, I feel really good about that.
Well, Lambert, and I remember what I was going to say, so I'm not going to respond to you before I forget what I, what I was supposed to remember.
Okay.
Um, dang, I just forgot it again. If, if we have an A day and a B day and we, when we are deciding who those students may end up being, the first piece is, do they ride a bus and who are their brothers and sisters?
Yeah, yeah.
And then we take that and we would, we would develop more of a, of a pattern and can give that to, help, get our principals to help us on that because there are other elements as well.
Well, and I would, I would take it one step further, and I don't know that this would happen a lot, but not just say who are their brothers and sisters, but what students live in the same household.
Yeah.
Because there could be some families that are co-sharing.
That's, that's a very good point. Now.
Yeah, and that way then, if they're, if kids are going to school on a B schedule, they all go.
Mm-hmm.
And, 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 and on B, B schedule, they all go. And, but it's going to take some coordination, but I know we can do that.
Another reason for that, and, and we're jumping around a little bit, but that's okay, because I think that's what this meeting is for, is to think through. Another reason for that is childcare. Um, you know, because if, if our students happen to end up being at school two days a week and three days not, sometimes older siblings can help out with that, with that childcare piece.
Yeah.
And we want to make sure that we, that we honor that and address that in every way we can.
Mark, I'm going to shoot you when we're ready to say. Pre-K is a social factor.
Supervise those kids at home at, at all times.
Yes. That's, that's one of our primary concerns, Lambert.
Yeah.
Now, Toby, I want you to say what you just did again, please, because this, this will segue us into the next part.
Okay.
I didn't know if you wanted to bring up the pre-K.
Lambert, can you hear Toby?
Yeah, okay.
Um, Kim, can you hear?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Didn't know if you wanted to bring up the pre-K, uh, what we plan on doing with that yet or not.
Why don't you talk about that? But before you do, no, go ahead and talk about that so we can, we can keep a constant thought about transportation.
Well, transportation piece on that, one of the things we talked about this week with Trish, who's here to talk to you guys tonight, is that we really want the pre-K to go five days. The whole week, the whole time without missing any days because remote learning is, that's not really an option for them. But if that's the case, then what we'll end up having to do is devote two buses pretty much to pre-K and delivering those routes, uh, which will take two out of the fleet for everybody else. Because what we do now is we put people on there and then we put the pre-K on there and then we drop the pre-K off and then we drop people off. But again, that's a lot of cross-contamination out there that we're going to do our best to try to avoid if we can, within the realm of being able to pick up and deliver kids to school. So that's a consideration that'll also go into the bus business as we move forward and how we're going to get the pre-K there every day of the week, including Wednesday and everybody else along with that. So I just want to throw that out there.
So did, if, if we have siblings in a home.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm, I'm still not sure how that'll work either, to be honest with you, because, uh, we eventually have to drop those siblings somewhere.
Right.
And more importantly, we have to pick them up from somewhere at the end of the day. So I, I'm just not sure, I'm kind of torn on that and we'll have to look at the numbers and see what they look like. Uh, right now, Trish doesn't have a whole lot of bus riders.
How many, Trish, how many bus riders are we thinking about from pre-K right now?
I think we said somewhere around eight to nine the other day.
That's not many. I mean, that's.
So riders that would need a full route all the way home, I'm looking at eight. Um, we spoke with sixty of our seventy-six families and only eight said that they would need a full route at this point.
And, and let me interject right here, if you don't mind, the problem with that route is that one's on Big Cove and one's on Larka. They, they literally go to the two extremes of our county.
It seems so simple, Toby.
With one student on each one of hers. So it's not like we can send the same bus on both of those, so.
Wow.
We may have to do some blended bus, we have to do some creative stuff maybe, but it sure would be nice if we could figure out a way. I'm committed to trying to limit the amount of, of transfers we do because it does have cross-contamination. I'm not sure how much we can do of that. I'm brand new in this, so I really don't know what I'm doing. And we'll just have to dive into it and see what we can make work. But once we begin to get those names, it'll be a lot easier for us.
There, there are two pieces to think about here. One is, we can't have exact numbers until the community knows exactly what direction the school system is going to go in because there are some who are waiting to hear before they make final decisions. And I understand that. So what we're doing is we're basing it on trend data and kind of projecting. We can start to move forward and we have in a lot of ways with more precise pieces. Another piece to keep in mind that you all may know, but others who are watching may not understand, why can pre-K go five days, but the kindergarten through twelfth grade cannot? It's because pre-K doesn't fall under the same guidelines that K through twelve is, is constrained to. Pre-K is considered a daycare according to the state and they have different guidelines. The pre, the daycares of Swain County and across the state have been functioning throughout all of this closure. So we can too. So what I want Tricia to do is to come and to describe to y'all what her plans are. And you can ask her questions as you want to along the way.
So like Mr. Sowell's telling you, we fall under the Department of Child Development and Early Education, which is a subset of DHHS. And many centers have stayed open, several closed. They have been following heightened health and safety standards. There are several similarities between what K-12 will be doing and a few differences because of the age of our children. So I wanted to walk you through some of those so that you would know what a day at pre-K would look like and some of the reasoning for why we feel like we need to open five days a week. So first of all, a similarity is that we do have to, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry.
I can't hear Kim.
She's telling me she can.
I couldn't hear you, Ms. Carpenter.
I didn't, I didn't ask the question, I'm sorry, I was.
That's okay. Um, so a similarity is health screenings are required upon entry, um, temperature checks we will be doing at the door, that's our students and our staff. We are limiting visitors that come in the building. So in the past, a big piece of Bright Adventures is that you have to walk your child all the way into the classroom, sign them in. That is no longer the standard for how that works. You will drop your child off on the front ramp after you've completed the health screening for your child and indicated their plans for the day. Breakfast, lunch, how they're going home that afternoon. And in the afternoons is the same situation. And we've done a lot of troubleshooting with our parking lot and how we can make a car line work for Bright Adventures. So in the afternoon, since there's not a health screening on the other end of the day, in the afternoons, they would be running through a car line. We're going to use some color-coded cards that parents will have that indicate to me, standing at the bottom of the hill, which classroom they're in. I'll use a radio, radio into the building. Ms. Penny, I need so-and-so for the parking lot, please. A staff person will walk them out for parent pickup in the car line. So it'll run very similar to how the school systems are running parent pickup. We won't be grouping outside or anything like that. Other pieces were easier for us because our kids stay with the same group already. We're not going to the cafeteria, we don't have art class, we don't have music class, we do everything in class. So those pieces were not hard for us. We already eat in our classrooms, our meals come to us, so those were not changes. Other pieces, we're pottying. I've planned out for my classrooms to be potted in groups of two, that's how they go to the playground. We share playground time. Under childcare, we have to have an hour of outdoor time every day. So I tried to work it to just have one class, but we would be on the playground every day and somebody didn't get a nap. So that didn't sound real good. Um, so we're pottying in two groups. Those would be the only children they would ever encounter otherwise, um, would be those kids on the playground. Otherwise, we're not doing any mass gatherings, no big room events. Field trips have been discontinued at this point, although we have seen some pretty cool virtual ones, so we might try that out, um, to do some of those things. Face coverings have been a question from parents as I've talked to parents, um, in the past couple of days. So preschool guidance is that any adult eleven or older in the building must wear a face covering. Um, it would only be staff in the buildings at this point. Um, for children, preschool-aged children, we will be encouraging face coverings if they can manage them independently. Um, the reason for that is, is if you have a child who can't manage a face covering, then you have a teacher who's having to get in close contact with that child all day to put that face covering back on them. Um, so we're going to work with our kids, have teachers who have found some really good books that have already been put out about face coverings for little kids, preschool-aged kids, and how they work and why we use them, um, so that we can encourage that for our children, knowing that it's not developmentally appropriate for all of my children who have some very specific needs. Um, so we will go through those pieces. Our numbers are lower right now, um, and the size of our classrooms, our classrooms are about twelve hundred square foot anyway, and so we have very large rooms. And then we use center-based learning, so all of those things lend themselves to a greater amount of space so we can space out in our classrooms to play and learn. Spoke with my teachers today, they're excited about having kiddos back, they miss them. And my parents have been very receptive. I've gone over the safety things that we're putting in place and they were pleased to hear it. I think a lot of the anxiety was just not knowing, um, what the plan would look like. So they're very pleased to hear those things. Questions for me, something I may have overlooked, Mr. Sowell?
That was a question you already answered, but the staff, okay with the first check?
They seemed very receptive. Um, there are some concerns about, you know, we're usually a very hands-on, lovey staff and we scoop up and we squeeze and, you know, we do all those things. So we talked about we're going to have to reframe how we express our love, um, for our kiddos, to make them, you know, know that they are welcome and loved and encouraged, um, with our words and our actions. So, because there'll still be shoe tying, um, you can't do that from six feet away. So there'll still be things like that that need to be done, but just to be aware that we're not going to be looking at your face when we're tying your shoe now. We're going to save that eye contact when we're at a safe distance.
How many classrooms do you have?
We have six classrooms.
Okay.
Did you say the numbers are down?
Mm-hmm. Our enrollment is down this year. Mm-hmm. Our enrollment is down this year. Um usually, we're right at max capacity with a waitlist. I always have three-year-olds that need in. Um and they typically get waitlisted because I only take a few three-year-olds each year. Um we're at seventy-six right now. Max capacity is one oh eight. I do have some room. So I have talked with a few families who have chosen Plan C for remote learning because of health concerns for their child. Um and some of those health concerns where they have already had a conversation with their physician saying, you know, I want my kid to go to pre-K. And their physician has said, not for this child. I'm not at this time, maybe later. Um so we are building a remote learning plan, um which is going to look different than it is in the spring. In the spring, we did a lot of live sessions, um and that will not be able to happen while my teachers are teaching live in person. So it'll be a lot of recorded sessions that go home. The teachers will work together, and they're a very collaborative group anyway. So they'll work together to build those remote learning. Um sessions, we're looking at Google Classroom to upload there. And then all of my kids who have indicated that they have to have this because of health reasons, they would use the same Google Classroom for pre-K this fall. So all my teachers will build those plans together, so it won't be every teacher having to build an in-person and a remote plan every week. Did that answer your question?
I had a question. Is that seventy-eight enrollment? Is that seventy-eight that have the parents have chosen Plan B? Or seventy-eight and then there's attendants that have chosen Plan C that won't be in the classroom?
It's seventy-six total initially. Sorry, it is seventy-six total. I'm waiting to hear back from a couple of parents that I talked to today, um able to give them more information today. And I'm waiting to hear back from them, um and they may be switching from their original when the survey went out. They had chosen Plan C. And they're, now that they have more info, they feel more comfortable with Plan B. So they were talking to their spouses this afternoon and give me a call back.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
All right. Thanks, Tricia.
Thank you.
I've asked, I've asked Allison to come and to share where Swain County is right now as far as COVID rates and trends. Because I think that it's important for us to have those numbers at least in front of us while we're thinking about these things. Um and then Allison may have some additional pieces that she wants to to add as well.
So I just want to start with um some statistics, United States, North Carolina, Swain County. Um this is what I do with the commissioners. I thought you might want the information as well. In the United States, um basically, a little over fifty-one million tests have been completed. Four point eight of those were positive, which means nine point four percent of all the tests have came back positive. The case fatality rate in the United States is three percent. In North Carolina, there's approximately been one point five million completed tests. Uh of those, approximately a hundred and seven, one hundred and seven thousand confirmed cases, which brings our um total to seven percent of those tests are positive in North Carolina. Uh the fatality rate in North Carolina is roughly one point six percent, case fatality rate. Swain County, as of this afternoon, we had two thousand seven hundred and ten, ten tests completed. Pending tests are three hundred and seventeen, negative tests, two thousand three hundred and three. We have ninety positive tests as to date, since this is from March. Unfortunately, we've had two deaths in our county as well. Um with those ninety positive tests, I would say there's probably around ten to twelve active cases. That's probably within the fourteen days period that we're still monitoring. Um so overall, the positive count for Swain County is about three percent. So the, of all those that have been tested, only three percent are coming back positive.
Still.
They're about. And we're getting positives. I mean, it just depends on how long the tests take. We had one another day. It took three days. And there's one today. It's been thirteen days. So it depends on which lab they're being sent to and how long it's taking for those results to come back. Uh with the school system, um what staff will be looking for is, of course, fever, chills, shortness of breath, a new cough, or a new loss of taste or smell. Um of course, the current data from the America Academy of Pediatrics, it was published at the end of June. Um they stress the importance of children going back to school. Um of course, for instruction, emotional skill, physical activity, and reliable nutrition. Um and of course, um be learning deficits, addressing mental health concerns, and of course, helping with food insecurity. Rates of COVID-nineteen infections are lower for children than adults. Children may be less likely to become infected after exposure. Children have mostly mild or asymptomatic illness if infected. And more likely, the spread of the virus is more likely within a household than among non, non-household contacts. So going on into diagnosis, if a student or staff is diagnosed with COVID-nineteen, um they are basically out of the school system for at least ten days since symptoms first appeared. They have to be fever-free for at least twenty-four hours with no type of medication. That has changed. That changed this week. It had been seventy-two hours. And there has to be improvement in sys- symptoms overall. If they have come back with a negative test, they can come back to school as long as they've not have a fever for twenty-four hours. If you're a contact to a positive, you're required at this moment to quarantine for fourteen days from that last exposure. So what that means. This is where it it does get crazy. Um so at this moment, it's fourteen days. So the question is, and we pose that as health directors to the state, I'm waiting on clarification. Um basically, is it going to be everybody in that classroom? Or is the teacher going to have to remember who was within six feet of that child? That's not going to be possible, in my, in my opinion. Um so at this moment, it's fourteen-day quarantine for close contacts. And that's within, you know, the six feet for more than fifteen minutes.
And does it?
No, not for a positive contact. They have not.
So would you count, would you, um, is it your opinion that if a, a group of students, uh even though they're six feet apart, but they're in a classroom for multiple hours per day, um would that equal close contact for this purpose?
Quite possibly, depending on the face coverings. And I bring that up because it's gone back and forth with face coverings. Because it says in the facts, uh facts and questions, or frequently asked questions, excuse me, that's, no, it does not, excuse me. It is in the Public Health Toolkit. It says that cloth face, excuse me, cloth face coverings are to be worn from kindergarten through twelfth grade, all teachers, staff, and adult visitors when they are or may be within six feet of another person. So that right there, that says are or may be within, people are asking if they are more than six feet apart, if they can get away from not wearing the mask. But then it goes on to say down below that cloth face coverings must be worn by all students from kindergarten through twelfth grade, all teachers, staff, and adult visitors on buses or other school transportation vehicles, inside school buildings, and anywhere on school grounds, including outside. So with that being said, we have asked the state for guidance on that so we can let our schools know for sure if you're eight feet apart, do you have to wear a face mask? And that's what we're waiting on guidance from that.
But I guess as far as determining if the, uh if there's a positive and um the students have either face coverings on or they're more than six feet apart or more than six feet apart without face covering, is is that considered that close contact for the purposes of whether they have to quarantine or not?
Anybody that's within six feet for more than fifteen minutes is a close contact. So when you think about that, that, that's hard to, that's going to be hard for a teacher or a staff member to determine in the, in a classroom. You know, especially if a, if a child is tested on Monday and they don't get the test result back until Friday and having to go back and think about who they were in close contact.
So probably if we have a student in a classroom that tests positive, then everybody will, in that classroom, will have to quarantine.
Quite possibly. Yes. I do ex- the state is looking at possibly changing the guidance. They've not come out and quite said that. You kind of have to infer it. But I do expect that possibly to change, that maybe they'll say, and this is just me, but maybe they'll say if the students are wearing face masks in the classroom, they do not have to quarantine for the fourteen days. That's been put out there, and that's not come from the state as a definitive answer yet, but it could. But as it stands right now, it is a fourteen-day quarantine, um basically for that, for that classroom.
Safe this measure for us to take.
Yes, but you also, it, not only is it in that classroom, but it is also that bus.
Yeah, exactly.
So that puts your staff out, and that puts your bus driver out, quite possibly. I mean, we'd have to look at the bus and and see about that. And again, that, that's another question posed to the state, probably, to look for that.
Federal funds available outside. They don't have to take sick leave, which we're.
The federal government has expanded uh some COVID leave options that they have given to us, and we talked about that some last week. But they're giving us eighty hours at full pay.
Okay, that's what.
For people that were presumed to positive cases and would be out of work or had tested positive. But here's where it gets sticky for me. If I'm teaching a classroom, somebody in that classroom tests positive, and they send me home for fourteen days, and I'm not positive this time, but I've been home for fourteen days. I've used my eighty hours. Eighty hours is out, all right? Then I go back to work. Then I get in again. This time, I don't test positive, but I get two-thirds pay. Now, they can use their own leave to supplement that to get to full pay. And but that's the way that the leave is designed, from what they're, from what they're saying to us right now.
But but you also might be able to, so if they uh they send you home for fourteen days, but during that fourteen days, you might test positive.
That's very true.
Yeah, then be out later, uh longer.
But that staff may also be able to do online learning as well. Could they not?
They could. If we can shift it, that's, and especially since their classroom, if the teacher is out, ninety-five percent sure that that whole cohort of kids will be out also. And that teacher will be allowed and be able to provide online instruction and not be subject to this leave.
To have to take leave.
Federal or otherwise, as long as we can make that work. The, there's the only place that really, that that's hard is when you're sharing kids. Like if, if I'm the first-period teacher, because I'm teaching history, and he's teaching music second period, you've got, then it may be that we have to find somebody to be an online, to be a facilitator for that group online for those other. You you see what I'm saying? So you're going to have to follow that cohort, the other places that they go. It's not insurmountable by any stretch of the imagination. It's doable. It's just one of those things. We'll have to think our way through it and make sure we have a process in place. And and we've already touched on that. The possibility that that, that that could happen. Can I say that we've got a hundred percent ironclad? We know exactly what we're going to do with that? No, I can't say that this minute, but I can tell you that it's doable. And we've got most of the rough edges chopped off it.
All likelihood, if we get to the state where that's a big issue, we're probably closed anyway.
We would, I'm, I'm going to be cautious with the words that I use. Um my staff has taught me that. I I don't want to use the word closed. Uh we would shift to Plan C, remote learning. Closed is whenever there is really no instruction happening, you know, and we have, I think we have a good remote learning plan. Um which we tried to share some with you last week. You saw how extensive it is. Uh we've come to a point now where we have decided on the probable online program that we will be using, um which is extremely powerful and has been recognized this week as a uh as a read-to-achieve assessment tool, uh where we've been using iStation and before that, we were using mClass. Um it's the, the program name, um which we're very interested in, is EdMentum. Uh it's got some tremendous possibilities, kindergarten through twelfth grade. Uh it even has coursework that would be available for some CTE students. Um it will read the uh, the work, the I, whatever is needed, out loud to students who have to have audible. Um it's available in fourteen languages. So we would shift towards that. Here's the difficulty with that in my, in in my mind. And I was, at some point, I needed to bring this to the table. There is no way that we can guarantee fully equitable good education for every student in Swain County if we go to remote learning. There is not any way. We will do everything that we can to make it happen, and it will be better than it was in the spring, and there will be expectations. But we have families and children who will struggle to complete everything that everyone else is. And if a student doesn't have a level of connectivity that is pretty measurable, they will be relegated to a level of paperwork. And I I want to tell everybody in the public and everybody, all the staff, all the, the school board, we'll do the best we can do. You you know our heart on that, but it will not equal what's in the classroom. Okay? That's been my greatest concern.
Could ever equal what they get face-to-face with the teacher. So, you know, we just have to do as best we can.
I recognize the other side of the argument very, very well as well also. Okay? Anything else?
Um so going back about the quarantine, you also have to think about middle school and high school, and they're changing classes and who they're around and this, that, and another. So that could be quite exponential, or it may not be. It just depends on what the state, I mean, guidance is going to change. It it changes every week. But we'll just have to wait and see what that looks like um closer to school. Um of course, social distancing is, six feet is required. Three feet uh has been brought up several times. So three feet can just decrease the risk of spread from twelve point eight percent to two point six percent. So if you go six percent, or six feet, that doubles that rate. So that looks really good. That's why it's six feet. Um of course, masks are required, except when eating, drinking, and during strenuous exercise, is what it says.
So let me, because you read something earlier about masks being required even while outside.
Yes.
So when kids are, when younger kids are on playgrounds, y- you know, how do we?
I think uh from the webinar this morning, they recommended the masks because children scream and yell and cough and sneeze and do all that wonderful stuff, and that transmission just travels. I can see that being very difficult on children outside, very difficult during physical education, anything like that. So that's where the teachers, staff are going to have to get creative with that, especially if they're outside. Because it also does recommend um mask breaks, is what it's called, you know, to do that. Uh ideally, it would be outside, is what it says, that they're six feet apart. Um but a lot of times, winter time, it's raining, anything like that. You can't go outside. So you would have to be at least six feet apart in your classroom, just spread out for ten minutes, maybe reading a book or something of that nature. Um but that would allow a few minutes to take your mask off. Kids would be a little more comfortable, and then put them back on for the next section or whatever's going on next with that. I've been asked about face shields. Um they are not recommended for face shields because there's no proven evidence that it will reduce transmission. Um they do go on to say that they understand in the younger grades, um special education, anything like that, that they may be necessary, um that would have to be left up to the board to mark, to the principals decide about face shields. Um in lieu of that, I would recommend the face mask that had the clear coverings, if all possible.
Do you understand what she's talking about?
Um we've already talked about the seating on the buses. The other thing was uh personal items, whatever they bring in has to be, it's, it says it's supposed to be in a individual labeled cubby or locker. So there's no sharing, um like at elementary schools, the two hooks that are back to back. It can only be one in that cubby per se. But if you're at fifty percent, I don't think that would be a real issue. It shouldn't be. Um about closures, um school or classroom closures, school closures, or when it might be time to transition to uh, you know, Plan C, I'm still waiting on guidance. All the health directors are waiting on guidance from the state about what that looks like. Is there a magical number? Is there a threshold? What is that exactly? And we're still waiting on that. We hope and pray we get some guidance. We may not, and it may just be left up to mark the board and my recommendation about what we do with that. Um another thing that we brought up is about um more so. Um, another thing that we brought up is about, um, more so just so we'll know when we get questions about masks with children who have conditions, their parents say they have conditions and they cannot wear masks. Um, is that going to be a require, is it gonna be a requirement, a physician letter to have on file? That they cannot wear a mask due to this? Is that gonna be a requirement from the school? And if that is, if they can't wear a mask, um, what, what can they use in lieu? Maybe it is that face shield, if nothing else. But just a thought that you might want to look into that and consider that, and the legalities of that, per se, to have that on file. And just for numbers, um, this report was pulled yesterday. Of the, our eighty-six cases yesterday, only eleven of those cases have been ages zero to seventeen. I would say the majority of those cases were asymptomatic. They were a contact that was tested, or they were tested because they were going to receive a, a medical procedure or something of that nature. There were a few that were symptomatic, and basically, they were extremely mild. They had a fever for one day, and they were good to go after that. Um, so we've been very lucky about that. But just to let you know, of the cases, as of yesterday, the eighty-six cases, um, or, I guess Tuesday afternoon it would be, there'd been only eleven in the county.
And that, from zero to seventeen, right?
What are the, what are the numbers from other age groups as well? Can, do you have that?
I do. Um, so of the total eighty-six, from eighteen to twenty-four, there was thirteen. Twenty-five to forty-nine, there's thirty-four. Fifty to sixty-four is fifteen. Sixty-five to seventy-four, uh, ten, and three, um, seventy-five and older. So the largest, um, positive age group as of right now is the twenty-five to forty-nine-year-olds, and that's pretty consistent across the nation. We have a hard time social distancing. Go ahead.
Allison, at, at any given time, is, is the majority of the, you know, we look at pos, we like the positive number, and we like, that's really high, but, uh, what's the average active cases at any given time typically? Do you know that, or is that?
That varies so much from day to day. I mean, we may have one case come in today, and then we might have six tomorrow. Um, 'cause it just depends on how many tests have been taken and how many are pending. Like, right now, we have three hundred and seventeen tests that are pending. That's quite a bit. And a lot of that is, um, people who are being retested because their work has required them to have two negatives, which the state is not recommending at this time. They do not want people retested to return to work. Um, basically, that is, the reason why is even if they test positive after the fourteen days, they are not actively shedding that virus. The virus may still be in your system, but you're not shedding that virus, and you should be able to return to work. Um, it also does create that backlog for those that are symptomatic, that were waiting on test four. Um, like I said, we, we're waiting on thirteen days on one. Quarantine period's over now.
Yeah, that happened to one of my staff members.
Yes.
So in a fever, technically, one hundred point four, right? So if it's like one hundred point three, the student can still come to school, is that the principle?
Uh, that is, would be really left up to the policy, uh, of the school, but it is one hundred point four. Uh, thermometers usually are, you know, within a point-three range. And especially people who wear hats, um, will record a higher temperature. So it'd be important if kids or staff are wearing hats that they, they take those off, you know, for a few moments, uh, before the temperature was taken.
Do you have a recommendation for us about, uh, what's our cutoff, um, for allowing a child to come to school or a staff member to come in on a particular day?
Well, one hundred point four is the COVID threshold. I think that would probably be better answered, um, through a pediatrician or a medical director, uh, maybe through Dr. Castor. Um, what other illnesses are maybe related? I mean, of course, with fevers, you've got flu, strep, anything like that. What that's around possibly? And you could use that as a basis just across the board.
Um, yeah, I know that thermometers vary, because I've had to deal with that, and most parents know that. It's kind of freak out when you get one and then you take another, sort of layer, and it's completely normal. So I just didn't know if there was a, where you said point three was a variant, kind of whether, what we should consider, but thank you.
You're welcome. I'm sorry, I don't have a clear answer for that, I'm, I'm not medical on that term. But I wanna think, in my mind, ninety-nine point nine is usually a fever. Do you know, Millie?
I don't know, I, I, we need to check with Dr. Castor or somebody just to make sure. But, but I would be in favor of making our policy somewhat slightly under that one, one hundred point four. You know, if, if we have that flexibility to do that. I mean, I know that's the COVID threshold, but that feels to me like if somebody walks into our school and, and it's a hundred point three, like, we're really dancing on some eggshells there. So I don't, I don't know, but it, it would be great to have Dr. Castor's advice on what he felt like would be a, a reasonable threshold.
That's all I have.
So Allison, can I put you on the spot?
Yes.
Can I put you on the spot?
I told her to expect to be on the spot.
Well, um, I was very interested in, in listening to you read the recommendations from the American Academy of Pediatrics, where they, their recommendation is that students are back in school. Did I hear that correctly, 'cause I was trying to take some notes while you were talking?
Yes, that's what I was told today through the state webinar. That's what they reported on.
That's what they reported. So in your professional opinion, do you have a professional opinion on, should we have students person-to-person, face-to-face, or?
Our numbers currently, um, are much lower than other counties around us, even downstate. So that makes me more inclined to go back to school. I think fifty percent is a very wise decision to do that. I think it would be very important for everybody to wear masks. When you stop wearing masks, you have that transmission, and that's where you're gonna get your cases, of course.
And I do know that, that I believe it's the CDC has just issuing some strong statements that say, if we all wore our masks for six to eight weeks, we would be having much different conversations in our nation than we're having right now, so.
Um, I, I truly think that, um, you can have school. I think it's gonna be very, um, candidly, it's going to be difficult. Wearing masks, cleaning, the fourteen-day quarantine, that's gonna be very difficult. Contact tracing is gonna be difficult on my office.
Yep.
But we've already discussed that, we're, did the best we can. But I think, um, of course, um, parents having the option to do online, I think that's very important for them to understand that they do have that option, and you are offering that option. I do respect that option as a parent. On a personal level, I will be sending my son if it is Plan B at this point. Um, I feel very comfortable with what the school is doing and how they are preparing. And I know that it's going to change a hundred times, and people are gonna get frustrated, but everybody's just gonna have to take a breath and take a step back and just realize this is ever-changing, it's very fluid. And everyone in Swain County is doing the absolute best they can for our children and for the staff. And, and just realize that, and just keep reminding themselves of that. So at this point, at this moment, if you can get everything worked out, buses and cafeteria and lunches and cleaning schedules and this, that, and another, which Mark and his team is, is doing.
They're doing a remarkable job on.
Exactly. I think you can have Plan B. The problem will be if the state does not change that quarantine period of fourteen days, and they say it's everybody in a classroom. That's where you're gonna start seeing a lot of possibly staff being out, who covers for them in middle school, high school, things of that nature. And when you start seeing your staff decrease, you're not gonna have enough to cover. And that's where it looks to Plan C, in my, in my eyes. That's where it goes to Plan C, is with staff shortages with that. So I don't know if I answered that question.
No, you did. Thank you, thank you. Thank you for your candor, I appreciate that.
Sometimes I'm more blunt than I need to be.
No.
I, I think it's really important that, and I think Lambert wants to say something as well, but I think it's really important that we, we separate two pieces for the public right now, because I don't want anyone to misunderstand what Allison just said. She gave us her professional opinion, and then she gave us her personal opinion, okay? And, uh, Allison is in a, maybe in, in one of the few people in the county that's in a more difficult position than we are right now. Because so many people are looking to her for guidance, and I admire, almost revere, what she's, what she's going through. But just because Allison thinks that she feels good about her son coming back, she is not necessarily suggesting to anyone else that they should feel the same way. I just, I need to say that.
Every, every household is different, every child is different. I don't know what goes on in your household, or who may be compromised, or whose grandparents may have cancer and doing chemo. You know, there's a million factors with each family and what they feel comfortable doing. But as a health director, at this moment, we're at ninety cases, hopefully. You know, when school starts back, it won't explode, there won't be a huge uptick. If there is, then that's something we'll have to discuss.
And, and at that point, if we see that, if we, if we go back to Plan B, that's a big if, then we will have, we'll develop a team, and we will do, um, what's the word I want? We will do updates and have conversations, I can't think anymore, often, to make sure.
Multiple times throughout the day.
Lambert, I think you had something that you wanted to add.
I, I just wanted to, uh, thank Allison for all the things that she's had to deal with, and thank her for helping us with keeping our students safe.
You're welcome, thank you so much.
Bye, Greg, thank you, Allison.
I, I think we are all in very difficult situations.
Yeah, I, I couldn't agree more.
There are two critical pieces in my mind, and, and I have a tendency to be a little bit of a bottom-line guy. I believe that as a school system, we can work through everything else that's on the table. These two pieces are, 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 are pretty, pretty difficult. And one is the fourteen-day quarantine. And as I've thought about that more and more today, I see that as a pretty big hurdle that could create some real issues for us. And I'm, and I'll be transparent, I've promised as superintendent that I would be transparent with the community, and not try to hide anything. That one piece could put us in Plan C faster than anything else. Because when it begins to affect our staff, it's gonna be difficult to offer quality education for every student unless I have an adequate number of people in the building. And I think everybody understands that, but I need to say that. That's, that's a difficult piece to overcome. And, and I'm gonna stop at that point and, and maybe move to the next, to the next idea, or give you all an opportunity to say something, and then I've got a question for you.
All right. One for the second, and I appreciate her candidness about it, and I appreciate her professionalism about it. And, uh, I feel better, not that we know all the answers, but I, I feel better for some of the things that she's, they're trying to do to help us. I appreciate that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Just don't crucify me tomorrow if we have a hundred new cases.
I mean, we're gonna do better.
I don't expect that, but anything could happen at any moment, and that's what I'm saying, you just.
That's right.
Unfortunately, you just gotta go with it, and do what you can and do the best that you can.
We gotta keep that in mind, this can change.
For the good or the bad, exactly.
And the guidance that we're given can change. I mean, to dial back from fourteen to ten.
Yeah, that was kind of shocking.
You know, and to dial back from seventy-two hours without a fever to twenty-four hours. Well, I think that some, there are people in the community and, and around us all over the place, I gotta be careful, I'll slide into my pre-remote here, that, that look at that and say, the people who are making these statements and giving this guidance just don't know what they're doing. No, what's happening is they're getting more information. And so they're able to make better decisions and give us better guidance, and it's changing. You know? And so we just have to expect that, you know? So, any, any other questions, any other thoughts?
I'd just to say that, you know, I'm not in epidemiology, but I do know that viruses are just a whole category of their own, and they, they can change on a dime, and that's what we're seeing happen with this. You know, it started, and we all thought, we knew how it was gonna go and the track that it was gonna take, and obviously, it hasn't done that. So, you know, I just, I do echo Allison's sentiments in, in saying that we just all have to be willing to operate from a point of grace and understanding, and even when we don't understand, realize that we're all trying to row this boat in the same direction. But sometimes we get turned around very quickly.
I can't help but thinking this. I don't know if people realize it sometimes, in a given year without COVID, she's got a full-time job as health director.
Absolutely.
Now, she's got this on top of it, which I guarantee doubles her case, her workload. And she's having to deal with that, and all this other stuff's having to wait, 'cause this is taking a lot of time. So hopefully, y'all, the whole community appreciates that. It's, it's tough on everybody, it's tough on the school system. I know they've worked hard this summer to try to come up with something, so, uh, I appreciate that.
We're not done yet, either.
And I just wanna say, Allison, we appreciate you helping us. And I, I appreciate everyone else in this room. Our school systems work really hard to get this plan going. And I just want the public to know, whether they choose B or C, our school system is doing everything they can to make it work. And, uh, I think that, I mean, two months from, two months from now, I hope we can look back and say we've done the right thing, but we don't know, that's the, that's the problem with the whole situation, we don't know the right answer. So, but we do appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you.
I think that's important, that we're able to share with you the responses from the community, because we have continued to get more, more data on that. I don't wanna belabor an issue, and I don't wanna wear you all out, because you sit here for a long time and listen, and, and I admire that. But I've asked Brandon, if it's okay with y'all, and if you don't wanna do this, we'll slide to the next thing, it's all right. I've asked Brandon and Tommy to give us some facts from the numbers that we've seen so far.
From what? The primarily what I wanna talk to y'all about is the fact, is kind of give a projection of what we think the numbers are gonna be like, as far as, the only thing I knew to do was to take the data that we have from the survey that we, that we had. And we take the numbers from that survey, and we try to anticipate how many people we'll have in our building based on our enrollment, try to figure out how many people are gonna be in the building, how many people are gonna be Option C by using those percentages and pushing that forward. Do we have hard numbers? No, but we've got numbers we can plan on, because we've got a pretty good cross-section. Usually, whenever you sit in on a survey, you don't get a whole lot of responses. In our business, you know, you're looking at twenty percent on the big end. Uh, we've gotten over sixty percent, and in some locations, like at the pre-K, uh, about eighty percent of the people who are sending their kids to pre-K have returned their surveys and given us some information and something to go on. And it's different by gra, by grade level, it's different, uh, by school. I mean, we've, but it's been pretty consistent in the mid-sixties, as far as the numbers of people that have responded. And so it gives us something good that I can feel good about giving you a trend. If we were to try to figure out what we were gonna, to what we're gonna do between Option B what we were going to, to what we're going to do between option B and option C. There's some, one thing to understand is that most everybody that is, that is employed working at Eastern West Elementary are K-six certified teachers. And so they teach all subjects kindergarten through sixth grade. There's, they can teach any of them. So if they have a medical issue that prevents them from being able to be included in face-to-face instruction, we can allow them to be the people that are offering the virtual, the virtual instruction to the people that are on, on C as the plan, they have chosen Plan C. And that's what we have sent out data to our teachers and we have asked them for the feedback from that. And we've gotten some feedback and we've talked to a lot of people and we're trying to do the right thing. And what it comes down to is that we're going to be able to provide for them. Particularly with the, um, we're going to be able to provide for our employees and for the people that have chosen to keep their kids at home at this point. We, we're going to be able to provide for them. We are probably, maybe going to have to pull some people and say, you know, we need you to help us with virtual. Because we have at East approximately a hundred and twenty kids that if we were to take a guesstimation about how many people are going to end up being in, in virtual education, about a hundred and twenty, about a hundred and sixty-five at West. So K, but K-five is pretty easy, honestly to cover it because we've got a few people that have requested. And we also have, uh, don't have to deal with the fact that I'm forgotten social studies class that I teach, or I'm an art teacher, I'm a Spanish teacher. You know, that's not the kind of thing that we have to deal with in K-five. So K-five is easier. And I don't mean that they're doing less because I can promise you they're not. They have to plan for every facet of all the education for children.
Things of education.
So it's, uh, it's different, but it's in no way less. I want to make sure that I'm not making it sound like this. Just from my standpoint, being able to, to plan for that. It's easier in a way because of that. Now this is the brass tacks of it. If we get to a point where we are around ten percent of our teachers. Mr. Wilson?
Um, I can't, I can't hear you, Tommy.
Okay, um.
Get Tommy chair that would be closer.
I'll sit down and let me see if this, tell me if this is better. All right, Mr. Wilson, is this better? Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, if, if I were to put a number on it and just project, if we lose ten percent of our teachers, we'll be in a situation in, in K-five that's not tenable. That'll be, that'll be a time for us to do something different. And so that will be around twenty. You know, there's around twenty, uh, there's around twenty teachers at each school that are twenty, does he twenty-four and twenty-one? So forty-five. So if we're losing twenty percent of that, you're talking six. If we get six or seven teachers out of the mix that we can't use them for virtual or otherwise, we're in trouble.
At the, at the elementary.
At the elementary schools.
Yes.
And you said six or seven.
Yeah, six or seven teachers. Then we start getting in trouble. Eh, that is, if they're not even able to do anything virtually or anything else. Now, we have some virtual options that we'll be able to tie those in like we discussed earlier when we were talking about if we lose a classroom full of kids to a, uh, to a COVID scare. Those, the teacher would be able to still provide for those kids because they'll all be in the same boat. It's a little bit easier. The variables are less. It's like solving four X equals twelve from figuring it out on our end. We can figure it out because we've got one variable. It gets difficult whenever we start moving into the middle schools and the high schools in terms of the certification pieces. If we get ten per.
We don't have, I, I don't have a question about whether or not, uh, we can handle it. Cause I believe that we can.
Yeah. All right. Our high school numbers and middle school numbers. Um, a hundred and seventy-four high schoolers is about what we're anticipating, around a hundred and seventy-five, a hundred and seventy-four, a hundred and seventy-five people to be option C and about a hundred and fifty middle schoolers. The difficulty arises there for us, in my opinion, if we have an English department. Then the English department gets hit hard and we lose three of five, the ability for three of five English teachers to be able to provide instruction. We're in trouble. So it's a much more fluid and a harder to solve equation for given a hard number of, well, if we lose seven teachers, we're in trouble. It's much different and it's harder to solve that. So it's like having to say instead of four X is twelve, it's you got some square roots and some grouping symbols and there's a whole lot more going on because it's just a matter of how cohorts cross. Because if I've got first period and I've come to school every day in B, I come to school every day and I've got first period, I've got social studies, second period, I got science, third period, I've got art. And the guidance says that if I've been in close contact with any of those people, that all the people have to go home. The next thing you know, we got four teachers out and a hundred and twenty kids going to the house. And that can happen. I don't think it's going to happen because we'll be at half capacity and we're going to put all of our, our stuff in place. But we're going to have to do what we have to do based on the guidance that we're given as we go. So I say that to say this, I can put a pretty comfortable, we're going to be able to cover it at the elementary schools up until a certain number. Quantifying that for what it's going to look like for middle school and high school, I can't necessarily do that because it depends on where we get hit and how hard. And that's something that we will collaborate closely with Allison and her department. And with you guys to help us make decisions as we get closer to that because that's going to be a much more fluid situation and harder to nail down what the right thing to do is from time to time. I know it feels like that I'm squirming around that, but I'm really not. It's just that there's going to be, there's so many variables included in that that it's going to be hard to put our thumb down on it. So any questions?
I think at the middle school level, and, and particularly at the high school level, when we're talking about staff, what would happen is, uh, Sonia Blankenship or Tim Kerr would start getting antsy whenever they see that they don't have certain people in the classroom. And then they would pick up the phone and say, we, we, we've got to do something. Um, and there is a piece that we, we can keep on the table if you want to and, and we probably should with, if we look at Plan B seriously. And that is every school doesn't have to be on Plan C at the same time. Um, if we have to take the high school to a Plan C remote because of some of these issues, we can keep B and the ele, we can keep middle school and elementary um, functioning. Okay? And, and do the best we can with that. That's what you are seeing in some places other than here. As I recall, Jackson County was going to do, I don't know what they're doing now because I've heard rumors, but rumors are rumors. Uh, they were going to do remote for the high school and then bring all of their elementaries, which is their K-eight structure in somehow. That's a possibility. Okay? So, uh, that, that helps us understand how that process would work just a little bit.
Yeah, and it's, and. It's going to be fluid from day to day and from minute to minute. But we have structures in place and we, I, I promise guys, we have, twenty twenty didn't get the memo that around here that July is supposed to be a little easier. You know, July is supposed to be easier around the central office because it, you know, the, the fiscal year is put to bed, you're going through the planning period, you know, you're waiting on schedules, you've got a few things going. That's not what's going on right now. We're working, we're brainstorming. And I promise you that we're kicking over rocks and we're getting to the smaller rocks now. And we, I feel, we can provide a quality product in B, is my personal opinion. And I believe that we will if we're given that opportunity, but that's not my decision.
Tommy, I want you to lay out some numbers for everyone because I'm, I'm pretty sure that you have them. We have been in communication with our staff about what their preferences are, what their concerns are. Um, how many of our staff, yeah, get your numbers? If, if y'all in the public hasn't learned anything, we're working hard to get the numbers. Okay? How many of our staff across the district right now? And if you want to break it down by school, but not by name, how many have said they are not comfortable at all coming back to school? They want some form of employment outside of the school building. Not to quit. They're not quitting. Do you understand that?
Okay. I have at the high school, one, two, three, four, five.
They are not in one department?
No, they're not. If we were, I'd be squirming.
And the, the closest, to my memory, the closest that we have for that might be
Math.
Math.
It's math. Yes.
Okay.
And, and to be honest with you, we haven't really, we haven't really even started discussing on the individual basis what accommodations that we could, because I've went so far as to try to set up, okay, so what are our goals? What are we planning on doing with accommodate, with this? Our goals first off is to try to make them comfortable with being in the school building, providing instruction face-to-face if at all possible. If we have to increase PPE, we have to increase social distancing, we have to add some different layers, layers of support. If we can do that, that's the first goal, you know? It, and I haven't even talked to some of these people yet. I may be able to get them back in if we can make them feel better about their chances of staying healthy. And, and we're not trying to drag them in. I don't, I want to make sure that everybody understands that, listening if we got people talking. You know, but, but we're, but that's the way this accommodation process is. Okay, so what concerns you? What will put your mind at ease? And so that we can try to talk ourselves through that and do what's best for our faculty and for our kids. Um, but that's, that's the numbers at the high school as they stand.
Rose down through the others real quick.
All right, at the middle school, got one. The middle school, we got one.
Elementary schools total?
Four. I've got some others that have concerns, but quote unquote, and this let, this, this speaks to the dedication of our faculty as some of them are saying, but I have some things that I'm concerned about, but if my kids are going to be in the building, I'm going to be in the building with my kids.
But pre-K?
Pre-K, I had one person that expressed concern, but wanted to be very clear that when she said, she said, I'm going to be at work. I'm going to be at work. I just, I, I, I have some issues and I need that to be out there, but with some increased PPE, if I wear a face mask in the, or the face shield in addition to my, my mask, I, I will feel much better about things. Guys, I can work with that.
Though, those are the staff members by school that have requested to not be in the building, but they're still willing to do something perhaps online. Okay? Now there's a whole nother group, um, that has said we have concern, we would like some accommodations and maybe willing to be in the building as long as we can provide a higher level of, um, insulation for them somehow. And those are the accommodation pieces, correct? Can you count down through there and give us a number who have asked across the district for that level of accommodation?
Bear with me one moment. Four.
May I ask what those accommodations might be? Did they, did they say?
They, eh, they want to talk, start the conversation about accommodations. And that's something that I'm going to be approaching you about also in addition to, uh, the things that I've got brainstormed. Because I'm not coming to you with no, nothing in my hands, but tell me what to do. I'm going, I'm going to say, does this work? What do you think about this? So that we can have a conversation based on some things I've talked to other people. It's on the list.
And, and one of the accommodations that we have, we have spoken about, and, and I'm just throwing this out because there are all, all kinds of options. Is if, if a teacher is asking to not have the same level of exposure that, that he or she might if he had the students in the classroom. Um, it is possible that they could provide a level of remote instruction and be in their classroom without students. So we've, we've looked at that possibility. We've looked at the possibility of providing them a space somewhere else so that they can do that as well. And I think it, to me, it's stunning at the, at the number of, the few number of stu, of teachers that are, okay, but that doesn't mean that they don't have concerns. Because they do. And we know that. They're, they're worried about being able to handle the face mask issue. And I get it. Um, they're worried about being able to maintain the six-foot distance, particularly with elementary kids. You know, and, and I, I get that. Um, they're worried about our ability to, to keep the facility clean and sanitized at the level um, that really we need to. I, I, I really believe that we've proven in some ways that we can and will do that. Um, they're, they're, they're concerned about, um, the HVAC systems. Because what we've heard lately is that the movement of air is really important. And, and I would tell you that at this point, the two primary concerns for maintenance and for custodial work is keep the HVAC moving. Keep it, keep it going. Do whatever we have to do. That's, that's goal number one. Y'all know the age of those systems. So that can be a full-time job. Um, and the other is, um, we, we'll make sure that we have the supplies. We're providing those and we'll take care of that for them. Um, but I, I'd want you to know and I want everyone to know, and I want our staff especially to know. Because I know that we've got staff members watching this right now. And I want them especially to know that we, we understand their concerns and we're taking them seriously. Uh, and we're, we don't want to put anybody in danger. You know, any more than they would have if they're in their everyday life. Okay? Um, anything else, Thomas?
No, I, I, I'm good if y'all are good. Do you have any questions?
Questions, please?
Yes.
About this C program, what, as far as for students or parents who've gone to survey some E C students, is there, does everyone seem to go, uh, want Plan B or Plan C or something like that later? Just tell me that you're getting to it.
Here comes Brandon right now, as a matter of fact. Dr. Sutton's on his way.
I have been surveying the extend one, the extended content students, uh, and some other parents. And we've got a mixture. Um, it, it is about the same. We're about seventy percent wanting remote and about thirty percent wanting, uh, our seventies percent wanting hybrid and thirty percent wanting remote. And that is pretty much true with our students with disabilities. Um, we are looking at some, um, other opportunities for students with disabilities. Um, that I'm trying to work on and plan. I've been in conversation with some parents to see what their preferences are and what their, their concerns are and to see if there's possible, um, alternatives. For example, one of the things under E C is homebound. Uh, so he, E C services can be, this child can be considered a homebound for medical issues. And, uh, that could change up the type of services we provide or how those are provided. Um, we received a grant, uh, to help provide compensatory services and future services. So that's going to allow us a little bit of freedom. Um, I'm working on planning that right now. Uh, I've got a big meeting with my E C staff coming up on August third to roll some ideas out at them. Uh, but with, with students with disabilities, they're going to, all, all students will have to have a remote learning contingency plan in place. Uh, any student that's selecting remote, that plan has to be in place by the first day of school. Um, we have a draft of that from the state right now. I'm going to edit it some. Um, I'm, that's one of the big things I emailed my staff about today. And then, uh, we'll work through that and, uh, we'll work on, the great things about students with disabilities is they have what they've called an IEP an individualized education plan. And, uh, those teams get to, get to, get to come together and they, they get to form a plan that best meets that student's needs. So a student, if we go to an A A to an A and a B, you know, that student may decide, okay, we only have three students in the classroom on Monday. I'm only going to come in for a few hours on Monday and I want to be the remote the rest of the time. Or if I'm able to offer some after-schools type stuff, oh, I'll come in on Tuesdays for an hour or two after school. Uh, so we have some options with, uh, and what we're trying to do is plan out what options we can roll out to, to families. But it looks like the most of them are choosing the hybrid instruction, just as our, uh, every parent is. It's about seventy, thirty everywhere.
And, and, and you have alluded, Brandon, um, to, you, you started alluding to the total numbers. Across the district right now, the numbers that we're getting.
It is sixty-five percent, sixty-five percent remote or sixty-five percent hybrid, thirty-five percent. It is sixty-five percent, sixty-five percent remote, or sixty-five percent hybrid, thirty-five percent are choosing remote. Are our numbers at our district, and that's pretty much true across every grade level. There's a couple of grade levels that are a little bit higher. I think tenth gr-, uh...
Tenth grade is a little higher.
Tenth grade is fifty-fifty. About that fifty-fifty. So... Sixty-three, thirty-six. It is, uh, fourth grade at West Elementary is approximately fifty-fifty. First and third grades at West Elementary are sixty-fourty, and first grade at East Elementary is sixty-fourty. Those were some of the higher percentages choosing remote, those grade levels that stuck out. The rest of them are pretty much sixty-five, thirty-five across the board. Yeah, not a problem.
Any, any other information that you think we need to have, Brandon?
Uh, one, yes. One of the other things that we can do is, uh, the, our lawyer issued, issued some guidance that allows for, like, your Extend One classrooms' preference to be given to students with, uh, with, uh, more severe disabilities. So if their rooms are smaller in general, and we're able to, to social distance them more frequently in general, that we could bring them back more frequently. So that is an option for parents to, if their class numbers are low enough to provide that. And in some situations, I think at both, both elementary schools right now, our numbers look like we're going to be off, able to offer the Extend One classrooms four days a week for those students with some of the more extreme, more, more challenging disabilities.
Anything else, Brandon? Let's, questions for Brandon? Anyone?
Just, you know, all of our teachers are going to have a, a huge burden and a lot to take care of. And last year, our E-C teachers had ECats they had to take on, and now this year, we've got this remote learning contingency plan that we have to have in place quickly. We also have, we have IEPs that were missed during school closure that have to be made active by the start of school. So these next few weeks for our E-C teachers are going to be tough. There's got, there's a lot of work for them, so as you, you keep them in your thoughts and prayers.
I do have one more question, Brandon.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. As far as the remote learning for E-C students, is that, is it more difficult than for, you know, or, uh, that was just a concern of mine, if those who, um, that program, that program is being taught remotely, that was the challenge, or the challenge?
It is, it is way more challenging. Remote learning for, for students with disabilities. There's a broad, there's a broad spectrum of disabilities. Some students with disabilities with the modification of a read-aloud program like we're getting will be, they can be successful. But there's other students that require more intense, specially-designed instruction, and that is very, very hard to deliver remotely. They require the use of, uh, different modifications, accommodations, assistive technology, uh, and activities that are just best, that can only be provided in face-to-face setting. And I, that's the reason Mark referenced closure early and being, and being careful with that word. You know, we, if we, if we had to offer remote to more students, if possible, we could keep small students come, small groups of students coming in the buildings for that direct instructions. Maybe limit their time, maybe cut it down and reduce the number in there, but that is something we could offer to, to students with disabilities and, and other students i- if, if it allowed. Whereas last year with a school closure, we were closed. We were, you know, it was, it was done.
Is there an issue with any of the E-C teachers, uh, or assistants about, you know, needing additional accommodations that, um, that makes the program problematic in administering?
It, yes, ma'am, and, but it, we've got workarounds. We will have students with disabilities that select remote learning, so if we do have some teachers that need accommodations, we can have, they, they will be the ones in charge of providing the remote learning. And we, I met with a teacher today talking about if she's in the classroom and one of her, and one of her cohorts is not, how can we pick up the people that are still face, the students that are still face-to-face? So we're, we're looking at how to cover caseloads and making sure that our students that select face-to-face and our students that select remote still get their specially-designed instruction.
And that was something they were talking about earlier about the face covering thing maybe different for those students, if they need that?
There is guidance, and I need to talk to Allison about this, but one of the guidance through DHHS, which seems to get updated pretty frequently, it says that students with disabilities are, uh, sensory disorders. There's, there's, you know, they can be worked with, and there can be exceptions made for those students with disabilities and sensory disorders. Of course, I've tried to concur, tell parents, part of the extended curriculum is, uh, daily living skills. So one of the things we would work with students is to help them try to learn to wear the face, the face covering or look at alternatives, and that's one of the things with these, your exceptional children's teachers. They get creative, so how else might a student be able to protect themselves and others with a face shield, which it may, may not be as effective, but it's better than nothing? So one of the things we would work on as part of our daily living skills is, of course, hand washing with those students, and now we would add in attempting to learn to wear the mask for longer and longer periods of time. Some places that's going to be, be super effective, and other places it may be, you know, an ongoing lessons and working with students, but...
Brandon?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
We worked, have, have worked really diligently to come up with a face-to-face plan. Because, largely because of the number of parents who are, who are wanting that. And also because I believe we're at a point in, with our kids and with our staff where we would need to be really concerned with how long they have been away from each other and what it means for them to be in the building. I want to show you the plan that we've come up with. And that doesn't necessarily mean that, that that is the plan that we have to use, but we, I believe, I, I'm thinking that we believe that this is a good Plan B that we can use. Doesn't mean that we have to, okay? So can you pull that up for me? We're going, we're, we're recommending, or we have been prepared to recommend a hybrid plan where the, the, the parents who are more comfortable with their students coming, or their kids coming back to school, that we offer an option where the, the students spend two days each week with face-to-face instruction and then three days of remote instruction. That remote instruction is different than the remote instruction for those parents who choose Plan C, okay? And in a remote learning plan, there, where there was a designation between the two. A lot of that designation has to do with the amount of time that the students will be expected in Plan B to be working when they're not in class, and who will be presenting, developing that instruction. If a student is in Plan B on those three days that they would be in remote instruction, that would be something that their classroom teacher has designed for them, and that will be supplemental to what they did the two days they're in class. Okay? There may be the opportunity to introduce some new instruction or some new concepts there as well. But we need to be cautious with that, because on the days that a student is in remote instruction, that same teacher is going to be giving live instruction all day too. And that becomes overwhelming, okay? And so that remote learning is supplemental and is not to be something that necessarily fills that student's whole day. There's another reason for that, and that is many of our parents, and we recognize this, many of our parents are working all day. And if they come home in the evenings and they need to deliver remote instruction or help, they wouldn't deliver to help with the remote instruction. That's an added burden, and I recognize that, okay? That's Plan B. And you see at the bottom how the, the transportation pieces would work. We've already talked about that, okay? Let's see Plan C. Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. Toby put this together, and I trust him, and I haven't read all of it. Now, how would Plan B work? And this is the piece that the community has been wanting to see, okay? We would, we believe that if we were to use a Plan B, that it would be best to group our A days at the front and our B days at the end. There are a lot of reasons for that. I can give you the two primary reasons. Number one is on Wednesday, we can have a full remote learning day for every student in Swan County, C and B. And that gives us an opportunity to do a deep dive clean into our buildings. And it also gives our teachers a full day to plan. Because those teachers that are doing live instruction in the classroom and also designing remote instruction, which is basically extensive homework, right? That's going to take a lot of thought. And particularly, and I'm not trying to say that our, our middle school and high school teachers have it easier, not necessarily, but our elementary, our elementary teachers have extreme time constraints during the day. I mean, if they have a special like music or PE or something like that and, and lunch, that's a, that's about it. And those are going to be limited, okay? So that's one of the reasons for, for, uh, for having that, or those are the two primary reasons for having that in the middle of the day. Have I missed anything, guys?
We got the, that first week split up into one day a week for each child, basically. It'd be an A-one group and A-two group. Schools would split those in half just so we get procedures down and kind of get back into the...
That would be, just be the first week of school. We would split our As into two halves, and they would actually only have, go to school one day a week. And it's like Toby said, so that we can get those, those processes and training and, and get devices handed out like we need to.
And remote learning setup.
Yeah, and it also gives us an opportunity to make sure that we have all of our processes and procedures in place correctly, particularly the screening pieces, to make sure that we have the right flow on that. Technology, and what would happen on that first week, on the nineteenth, all of our students who have, whose parents have selected C will come through the school at a point in time to pick up their technology. And, and they would then have instructions on how to, what kind of tutorials to go through to help them get ready for that. Does that make, does that make sense to you? Okay, now that's, I, we think that would work best. You're going to see all kinds of plans, you know, AB. You're going to see alternating weeks. We think that that's best for our community, right?
And I think too, Mark, it's important to point out for anybody who might be at home watching that that's not two days on, three days off.
No.
That's five days on. Two days off on the weekend.
You've seen a little bit of how the drop-off works, or a little bit. You, you were told about that, and, and this is just information about that. Toby, I can't see all those words because I'm old. Would you highlight anything up there that, that we need to bring out?
I, I think it's all pretty self-explanatory. It's just information about drop-off. The students will be screened, so forth and so on. We've stated in there the temperature. If you guys wish us to drop that threshold, we can drop that before we release it to the public. Talking about going straight to class, and then we cover down there that all staff and students will be required to wear face covering. Students will be given breaks whenever possible, remain six feet apart, all of that. Just kind of some general information there for quick answers that they can find easily when they go through this. And then the next page, we've just created a short, frequently-asked questions. These are questions that we've heard. We just want to go ahead and address those upfront.
The first question that parents are having has to do with masks, and yes, students are going to be required to wear masks. We've gone through that. We will, we will implement breaks during the day, and we'll do that in a safe way because we all understand that that mask is probably next to social distancing. Social distancing is the most important piece that we have, but next to that, the mask is, is vital.
And if that changes, trust me, Mark will be the first tonight.
Yeah.
He'll be the first on the call.
You sent this to us right there, the lady. I didn't get to look at it. You sent that out.
I don't know if I sent, Jerry, I don't think I did. I sent you two things, but I don't think that this, did I send?
That's not one of them?
No, this is not one of them.
Oh, okay, I didn't.
No, but we've designed this to be sent out to you and everybody else. I just wanted to go through it, okay? Uh, the next, the next piece that, that everyone needs to understand, that if a student is in Plan B, they have the option to switch to Plan C. The parent can do that, and, and that will, that will stay true all the way through, as long as we are perhaps using these two. The, the piece that our parents and everybody needs to understand, that once you go to Plan C, there's no going back. Because at that point, what we've done is we've adjusted our numbers, okay? And as more students drop, if they were to drop out of Plan B, it may require us to shift personnel to cover Plan C, remote learning. Does that make sense? Okay, it's a numbers issue. If, if someone selects Plan C at the beginning of the year, we cannot bring them into Plan B and bring them into the building. We can't put them on buses. We're going to be fighting for making that work anyhow. Let me see. It, it's important to note that due to the bus restrictions, that students are not going to be able to ride home with friends. They're not going to be able to get on other buses because that, those seats are occupied, and we, we can't do anything about that. Well, that's the expectation, okay? That could create a problem for, for parents who have joint custody. And we recognize that. And, and what we would ask is that if there's a joint custody issue, that those two parents develop a plan, and they pick one stop. And if that means that someone else has to pick that child up and take them somewhere, or that they have to do a, a child exchange or something, that they do it after the school day, and they not rely on us to be their transportation for that. I really am sympathetic to parents in, in that position. I don't judge, and I don't hold anything against them, but we're under constraints, okay? The, this is critical. The remote learning of last spring doesn't exist anymore. That was a get-through-it-and-do-the-best-that-you-can. That is, that's not quality education. There will be grades. Grades will be based upon quality of work, completion of work, and there will be attendance that will be based upon turning in products. And we designed it that way on purpose because we, we don't want to penalize someone who might run into a difficulty with connectivity and can't get their stuff in on time. You know, so if they turn it in, then that means that they were attending, all right? The state requires us to monitor those two pieces. Did I say that correctly? Okay. And until we are out of the state of emergency or until we go into a Plan A, there will be no visitors in the building. Okay? Now, visitors do not include interns from Western, because they'll go through a vetting process. Visitors will not include those who are bringing different services like occupational therapy and things into the building, because they'll be vetted. Visitors will not include speech therapists that are coming from Western because they'll be vetted. Everyone else, I may have missed somebody, but pretty much everyone else is a visitor, and they're, they don't need to be in the building, all right? We will have a process, though, for parents to pick up students, where they'll go through the same procedures that we've talked about already, and they'll be able to sign out their children, okay? We will be serving breakfast and lunch, but the food will be brought to the classroom. We are looking at additional custodial staff to help take care of some of those cleaning needs. What we're finding is no one's wanting to apply right now. And, and that's really interesting, because we've never had that problem before. So we're looking at other routes that we may take. The most exciting one that I'm thinking about is using our occupational students at the high school after hours somehow. You know, I think that that is a real doable possibility. And you can read the rest. High-traffic areas will be taken care of each day, and it is critical that parents check their kids' health before they leave. Take their temperature, and make sure that those, those symptoms that Allison has gone over and we've mentioned are taken care of. Do you have any, any questions about any of those? Allison?
Just out of curiosity, will there be after-school, or is that a thought maybe in the future?
That would be a future issue. Right now, I believe, let me answer that in a different way, okay? The traditional after-school program won't exist. The traditional after school program won't exist. Because I believe that what we need to do right now is to focus on getting ourselves back into a swing and not add that second layer. I know that there are parents who really need that and want that, but that's a whole different level of concern whenever we talk about where we're going to keep students and things like that. There will be some after school money that is spent on staffing for remote learning students during the day at remote learning centers. For example, at the, the Swain Education Center, we have space there. The First Baptist Church has offered space for us there. Regina Ash, who will be in charge of the remote learning Plan C students, has been in contact with folks on the reservation. And we've been in conversation of if they will agree, and if they don't, that's fine, you know, but with, at the Ginger, a room at Ginger Lynn. Perhaps a, a room at the Birdtown Community Center. There's some space there. We are in conversation with the lead of the Southwestern Community College Center, and she is waiting for approval to use space there. We may have to share that space with some others, so there would be a timing issue. So after school funding will be used during the school day for that, and we can also use it in the evenings for the same purpose. We're doing everything that we can to help those who may not have the level of connectivity that they need.
So, so in that, with that scenario, are we talking about those remote learners coming to those sites to be able to do, complete their remote learning?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Now, I've, I've been in, I've, I've entered an agreement with the Low Wealth Consortium. Our, our school system receives money from small schools and low wealth funding, okay? There is a consortium that works to persuade the legislature to extend us more money. It's a, well, it's political activism is what it amounts to, but that, we're part of that. And the Low Wealth Consortium has gone into an agreement with Verizon for 10,000 MiFi hotspots. And we have the funding to purchase 90 of those, and they will come with 12 months of service from Verizon free. We buy the hotspot, they give us the service for free. If I could find another $30,000 or $40,000, I would buy 400 more.
Have you applied to the Nellie Health Foundation for COVID grants?
We have not applied to them, but I have been in, in communication with the, the parent group, which is Dogwood, and have had a face-to-face conversation with their executive director. They're helping us in some other areas, but I would be happy to reach out to them for that COVID grant.
It's open right now. I think it closes August, it may be. It's $10,000. It's for COVID expenses for right now through that organization, and I am on the board, just to let you know that. So I do encourage you to apply for that.
Okay.
And then the larger grant will probably come out end of August, first of September, probably, for larger capital expenses.
We'll, we'll jump on that really quickly. I, I want to go ahead and tell you all that the Dogwood Foundation has given multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars into, to the RESA, which is our West, Western Regional Educational Association, to purchase devices like you saw in the hallway out here. And last word was, we will, we will be receiving five of those, one for each campus, and we are also lurking, looking at purchasing five more, so that we'll have three in some places and two at others, which will really help us as kids come off the bus. Okay? That's, that's a win. Plan C, we'll be using Edmentum. That will be the primary structure piece of it. Every student will have a facilitator. I can't promise that that facilitator will be a specialist in a subject that they need, but that facilitator will be an employee of the Swain County School System, and will have access to teachers for help if it's needed. Okay? Right now, that's the best that I, that we can do. Okay? Have I missed anything else, folks? Questions? Any more slides, Toby?
So, Mark, I have a question.
I would love to answer it.
Just, just for my own type of question. So at some point during the, like Allison's recommendations and things happening, and if we go to Plan B, then at some point, if, if things are out of our control with, with COVID start occurring, then, then we could transition the whole school system into Plan C, right?
Yes.
Instead of just the one.
Yes, and we can, my, my goal, who am I talking to? Kim. I'm sorry. My goal, my, these, these folks are, are rolling in the floor that I couldn't remember who you are. When, when I get home tonight, Kim, I won't remember who I am. My goal has been to develop Plan A, B, and C, and particularly B and C, so that we can roll from one to the other almost seamlessly. And with the way that we've laid this out, every student will be able to move into remote instruction. If they are a Plan B student, the remote instruction, should we go into Plan C, will be provided by their classroom teachers. Understand? The students who are already on Plan C will continue the path that they have already been on, using the facilitators that have been assigned to them. Do you see the seamlessness of that?
I do. I do. It sounds like the, the only plan that can, that will work with that. So, thank you.
And we, we have, if, if we go with Edmentum, and I shouldn't have said that, that we're going with them, because we're still waiting on a proposal from Apex. Because we'll be using some federal money for that. We had to have three proposals. The problem is Apex doesn't provide anything for, for elementary schools. Okay? If we go with Edmentum, we will be able to use the components of Edmentum as well for the students who are in Plan B. We will be purchasing enough so that it can go both ways. But I'm, I want to be careful with our staff and not put too much on their plate and on their, their minds when they walk in the door. They're already stressed enough, I know that. And so, we're doing, we're, we're going in pieces. Does that make sense? I'm really trying to take care of them. Any other questions, Kim? Or Lambert?
No.
Anybody else?
No, I'm good.
I, I think it's important, I mean, and it's in print, but I think it's important to say this out loud, that due to the pandemic, we will not be allowing transfers in from any other district. I mean, obviously, if someone moves into our community, but...
And, well, yes, okay, and let's, let's put all of those pieces in place one at a time. If a student wants to transfer from another district, they will not be allowed to do so unless they're living in Swain County.
Right.
So if someone comes from another district and moves into Swain County and has residency, we will accept them, because by law, we should.
Yes, absolutely.
But they will be immediately placed on Plan C.
C.
And that's where they will stay. As of July the 31st, we will not be allowing any students to transfer between East and West. We have, usually at this point in the year, we have several people who want to, for students to move somewhere, particularly kindergarten students, because they're deciding that it would work better there. We'll give them some grace, and we'll look at them on an individual basis, but after July 31st, no more. Because we've got our numbers in line. Okay?
Can I ask if I should say, just to be clear for everyone who's listening, is that those students who may be out of our district, that you have had previous enrollments or was enrolled as a in the 2019, 2020 school year, don't fall into that category.
No, we are not going to tell students, if they have been already enrolled in our school system, that they have to leave. We're not doing that. These are for new enrollments only, transfers. Thank you for making that clear, Kim.
And if, and if students, I mean, if we have a family moved in from Florida, they would not have the option to do anything except for remote learning.
That's exactly right. Someone who moves into the county will be accepted into the school system, but will be placed on remote learning.
And we're just talking about, at this point, this semester, right, Mark, this first semester of the 2020 school year.
Until the end of the state of emergency, or the end of the semester. No, until the state, until the end of the state of the emergency. We can't, we can't go back until that's over.
Yeah. I'm, I'm hopeful it will be before the end of the semester, but I'm not confident.
I, I have, I don't have confidence in anything except the Lord who loves me. And I have confidence in you all. And my wife.
Keep talking.
And my children.
Keep talking, keep talking.
And the people that I work with. And Allison Cochran. And the board members. And the staff of Swain County Schools.
Yay!
And our students. And I'm going to be quiet, because you're going to bring me to tears if I don't.
May I have a question or suggestion, I guess? Going back to Mr. Winston's comment about possibly hiring somebody for the buses, and what that would cost, that $150,000, $150,000, and then talking about buying thermometers for the students. If you hire somebody and they, somebody presents with a temperature, but their parents are already gone, you, you can't just leave them there. You're going to have to take them to school anyway. Is that correct?
Can't do that. We can't do that.
If we know that a student, if, if we screen a student, and maybe I'm misinterpreting you. If we screen a student before they get on the bus.
Right.
And they present with symptoms.
Yes.
They cannot get on the bus.
Okay.
And that's DHHS guidance.
Okay.
Now, if you want us to operate differently, we'll do that, because you're the boss.
I, I'm not the boss. I do appreciate that. My concern would be the safety with that.
I agree.
So, so if you're, if you're, so just know that if you're taking that temperature before they get on the bus, there might be that likelihood you're turning a student away who has no one at home that's eight years old.
Yes.
And what that looks like.
And that is the reason, that is the reason, no.
So, so I wanted to bring that up, so I wanted to make sure everybody was aware that is a possibility and what that would look like, and maybe, and I hate that I'm saying it, maybe don't take temperatures on the bus because of that reason alone, and maybe do rely more on parents with that, hopefully keeping their child at home. And maybe if you do have this $150,000, if you can find it or whatever, that might be better used with additional staff, teachers assistants, or even CNAs.
Yes.
For the school systems to help with those children that are sick throughout the day, because you have to have a separate room now.
Yes.
For those that are sick, and someone has to be with them or at least monitoring them, and maybe taking that load off of your already established staff with that. Plus, they could do other things. I'm sure there are multiple other things that they could find to do through any of the schools.
And I, I know, and I know that that is a concern, Allison. That point is a concern for the community, and, and especially for our staff, because they've mentioned that. But there's a point that has to be understood by everyone, and that is exactly what you said. We don't know if a child has somebody at the house when they come to the bus. And if, if we put ourselves and them in a position where we can't get them to school, we may be doing more harm than good then.
I agree.
But I also understand that that puts a potential exposure onto the school bus. I understand that.
But again, that's where it's one per seat, and your face mask has to be worn, and that's, you know, that lessens that transmission in that mode. And, and I accept that as, as a parent. I would accept that as a health director. I would be extremely worried to leave a child that is sick, that's running a fever or something of that nature with no one at home.
And, and I think that this is a good, good time to bring up the point that, that continues to go through my mind. There is no way that the Swain County School System or anyone else right now can eradicate the risk. At all. We can't. But what we can do is everything within our possibility, within our, our power and potential to mitigate the risk. And I believe that we're doing that.
And even if one of our students is at risk, but the, the biggest risk is if they would be alone, then we will take them in and, and get in touch with their parents.
Yes. Yes.
But I think that was, talking about having the potential for those who needed the monitors to get those and let the parent be able to add a monitor and follow the sensation and, and mean it.
Yes.
And do the work to accomplish that.
Yeah, I think that that solution is brilliant, too. I love it when there's a problem and somebody else has a solution already. That's, that's wonderful.
And, and I think too, I, you know, I have no idea of, no way of knowing how many people watch this or pay attention to, to the things that, that we're discussing. But I, I hope that for those who have watched this, and, and perhaps watched the one last week, can really get a sense of the heart and the desire and the motivation that exists within our school staff to really, truly do what they feel like is best for students as a whole, to, to try to help take care of their social and emotional needs and their making sure they're getting two solid meals a day, and educating them to the best of, of our school system's ability. So, so I really hope that that's coming through to our community. And I just want to make a request of the community, and parents, and guardians, and grandparents, and whomever may have a, a student living in their home, is to ask you, you know, obviously, you're trusting our system with your child. And we need to trust that our parents are going to take this as seriously as we are taking this. And I just implore you and beg you, beg you, as the adult in the home, if your child is sick, don't send them to school. Do not send them to the bus. Keep them at home with you. Take them to your primary care provider. Get their needs met, but don't send your child to school if you know they are sick. Please allow us and our entire system that courtesy of keeping your child at home. Because that will go a long way to helping to lessen the impact that this pandemic is having on our community. That was my preacher mode.
I come by naturally.
I do come by naturally.
You got an amen from the amen corner, I hear. That would be, for the record, Lambert Wilson. Are there any other questions, or, or, from anyone here before we get to, towards the end? I, with all of my heart, want to do what's right for our students and our staff. I am so concerned about the safety and the health of both groups. I'm concerned about our ability to serve the community in the best way. There is a big part of me that feels that the Plan B option, using the opportunity for parents to opt out into Plan C, is the best approach right now. There's a big part of me. A lot of that comes from my heart. Because our kids need to be in school. But I also know that there's risk. And if we need to move to Plan C as a district, then that's what we'll do. I seek your opinions on that, not to put you in a corner, but because I believe that our board members have been elected to represent the community in the best interest of that. And that's what I look to you for. So I would ask for your input and your direction on that. And if you as a board decide that it would be better for us to go to Plan C and look at Plan B better, later, then that is absolutely what we will do. And I promise you that we will give it every amount of energy that we have to take care of every student. You have my guarantee. But if you feel that we could try Plan B, then we'll do that, too. And if we find that it's not working, we will be quick to move in a different direction. I can go either way. I think you know my heart. I think you know my heart. I think a lot of our staff are ready for Plan B, but that's because we love the kids and we want them in the classroom. But we also love our staff, and we want to take care of them. So I need to be quiet and let you all speak, please. What are your thoughts?
Based on what I've heard and what I've read from the information you've sent out and what Allison has said, putting all the facts together and with the teamwork you've done and the hard work you've done with our safety in mind of our kids and education in mind for our kids, I'm, I'm, I'd say comfortable, but I'm comfortable from the standpoint of we're in this situation. So you have to be comfortable or uncomfortable, I guess. But I'm comfortable with trying this plan that you put together. Knowing that if something starts unravelling, then it will immediately, I'm assured that you, there'll be action taken and we'll move some other direction. But I think we've got to try something. And I'm real comfortable with the fact that everybody's with masks, everybody's social distancing, everybody's washing their hands, everything's being followed. And all the guidance has told us is that if we follow these things, then it should work. We may have a situation, a bump or two. And I know we we all dread that bump or two if it occurs. Nobody wants it to occur. But I feel better, and and I would favor that. I would, I'm I'm in favor of that.
Same here, I think the B schedule, at least trying this to see, I mean, we still have a few, what, three weeks?
Yes.
Anything could change between now and then, so. But as of right now, if we had to make a decision, I think B would be good to try. And like you say, if it don't work out, we need to go to C pretty quick, so. I just think that's the best thing to do right now.
Melly, Kim, Lambert, somebody, you all want to speak to this?
I think that, uh, I I know that a lot of work is still there. I still believe that, uh, we should probably do, uh, remote learning for everybody. But, um, I can go with, I can go with the other way if I need to.
I, I want, as anybody else, want our kids to be in school, I want our kids to be, um, healthy, and want our staff to be healthy and all the families that that impacts in Swain County. I also understand most of that comes with, uh, the concerns for the student, student insecurities and the social, emotional aspects and, um, safety of the children and the socioeconomic issues that result from from this. But I, my heart, um, my heart prefers Plan C, just because I, uh, even for short duration, to see where, uh, our pandemic is going and and hopes that things will improve. That doesn't take anything away from my knowledge and appreciation and a support for everything that all of the administrators and all the teachers are doing and they're, I admire them for the, um, desire and willingness to come back to school. So I, like Lambert, would prefer C, but, and that B, uh, a lot of work's gone in and a lot of time's gone in, and, um, that with that working care, uh, comes from all of your heart, and I know that. And I know the number one concern is the staff and the staff. So, um, I would prefer C, but, uh, understand B is is the plan, uh, and willing to give it a shot and and see where it goes.
Do you want to speak to this, Melly?
You know, I, I guess you could just restate everything over and over again. I I don't think anybody in this room is not feeling the tension and the angst and the the desire to do one thing, but maybe feeling like, you know, it's just, it's such a difficult time. I think the thing that has perhaps resonated with me the most tonight, though, are the actual numbers that have come back to our system from our parents and our staff. I'm very impressed with the fact that we've got such a high number of staff members who want to be teaching face to face. And I'm impressed with the fact that we've got about 65% of our parents that want that. You know, I would love to be able to say that I can just jump up and down and go, wow, this is absolutely the best plan. And no matter, you know, I, and none of us can say that. None of us can say that. But to me, just based on those numbers, I feel like we need to give Plan B a try with the understanding that at the drop of a hat, we can, we can drop back to Plan C.
I'm still with that, Melly.
Thank you.
So, would it be, Melly, and as as the chair, I put this in front of you, and and I hope, I hope you understand why I'm doing this. I, it is never my intent to put the Board of Education in a more difficult spot than you already live. But would it be appropriate for there to be a motion and a second and a vote on that? I think what we have right now is a fair consensus. Do you feel like that it should be approved by a vote?
The only reason why I would feel like it should be approved by a vote is if that is a legality thing. If we can go with a consensus, I'm comfortable as long as the other members are comfortable with going with a consensus.
Melly has said that she is comfortable moving forward with a consensus unless it's a legality. And to my knowledge, to my knowledge, and and I lean on my my brothers and sisters who are here, I don't believe that it's a legality that we approve this, is it? Do any of you feel like it is?
I think it's important that we approve it.
Okay, then then we'll, we'll do that.
Okay, so, Melly, the the ball is is in your court then, to call for a vote.
So I need a motion on the floor.
I'll make the motion and with the caveat that, in the motion that two, three weeks, we've got, what, four? About four weeks before this would actually take place.
Three weeks till we start work, four weeks till the kids come, okay.
All right, we've got four weeks till the kids come. And if if the conditions worsen before then, then we drop back and we'll meet again and that we relook at it. But given the, if the conditions stay the same, then my motion would be that we go with Plan B. Well, Plan B includes C, too.
Well, it it's it's a hybrid B.
Hybrid, hybrid Plan B.
I guess that's a way to say it. Lambert and Kim, did you hear Jerry? I'm going to turn the mic so that you can can participate more, I'm sorry.
My my motion is that we go with a hybrid B, which for those parents that want B and the parents that want C, we'd get that. And that has a caveat to it, that that's within four weeks. If conditions worsen in Swain County, that that we need to relook at, that we can always come back to that, and we can stop it at any time until then. If things stay pretty stable or get better, then we continue it. So at at this point, that we move ahead with the hybrid B plan.
Um, I think that we have the, uh, option as a Board of Education to change it at any time we need to.
Yes.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that was in the motion, though.
Yes, sir.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. I guess, just so that we can get a good record of this, we'll, rather than all of us just saying aye at the same time, we'll do a poll and let you each just vote individually, just so that we've got a good, clean record of it. So Mr. Hyatt?
Vote for Plan B.
Yes.
Mr. McKinney?
Yes.
That's a vote for Plan B, I vote for Plan B. Mr. Wiltson?
Um, I'm going to go ahead and say that, thank you.
Okay, and Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, I'm, I would go for Plan C, straight out.
Okay, so, so. The motion at this point carries three to two to start with our hybrid Plan B with the understanding that should conditions worsen between now and the beginning of school, we can drop back to Plan C. And if conditions worsen throughout school, we we will drop to Plan C. Did I state that accurately?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I make a recommendation? That in in light of of that vote, and also because there are some other pieces of business, including, um, the approval of some personnel issues that we cannot take care of tonight, that we move our meeting to the first week of August. And that will allow for us to examine what the response is, what the the numbers are doing, and if as a board, you feel at that point that we should switch, we can make an official move in that direction, okay? Is that, is that a fair recommendation?
Yeah, that's good with me.
Would you all look at your calendar and see if you would be available for the first Monday? Or, let's start with the first Monday in August.
August the third.
August the third.
I'm of it. I'll be there.
August the third.
So Kim and Mr. Wilson, you both said you could be available, you were available? Okay, yeah, I am as well. So August 3rd, 6 o'clock, here or?
Let's plan on upstairs, I'll have to check on this availability, but there's rarely anything on Monday nights that I recall. So August 3rd will be our our August Board meeting, and if we feel that we need to have another one after that, we can schedule that as well. I would like permission from you also to have a digital poll whenever we get our final information on the online remote learning tool. I believe it will be Edmentum, but we need to make sure that we have all of those pieces in place. And because of the cost, we're going to need approval from you, okay? So would it be fine with you, and publicly, I want to say that that we will make those, make that vote known? Okay, is that fair? And then we can revisit that again on August the 3rd for a public approval. I don't know of anything else that we need to cover, Ms. Burns. So unless you all have closing words, I suppose that that I'm done, I guess we're done, I don't know.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion. I'll say it.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. You, too.